Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for January 28th, 2020. You can all rise and join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to do things just a little bit differently tonight, and I'm going to invite Rabbi Haber to the podium to provide an invocation for us, right in recognition of the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz.
Thank you. Yesterday, January 27th, marked the 75th anniversary of the liberation of the Auschwitz-Birkenau death camp by the Soviet Army in 1945. It is our duty to remember the lives lost and eternalize their story for future generations. I would like to share a prayer composed by the former Chief Rabbi Britton, Chief Rabbi Lord Jonathan Sacks. We remember the victims of the greatest crime of man against man, the young, the old, the innocent, the million and a half children starved, shot, given lethal injections, gassed, burnt, and turned to ash because they were deemed guilty of the crime of being different. We remember what happens when hate takes hold of the human heart and turns it to stone. What happens when victims cry for help and there is no one listening? What happens when humanity fails to recognize that those who are not in our image are nonetheless in God's image? We remember and pay tribute to the survivors who bore witness to what happened and to the victims so that robbed of their lives, they would not be robbed also of their deaths. We also remember and give thanks for the righteous of the nations who saved lives, often at risk of their own, teaching us how in the darkest night we can light a candle of hope. Today, we call on you, Almighty God, to help us hear your voice that says in every generation, "Do not murder, do not stand idly by the blood of your neighbor, and do not oppress the stranger." We know that while we do not have the ability to change the past, we can change the future. We know that while we cannot bring the dead back to life, we can ensure their memories live, and so we pray to you, Master of the Universe, that you guide us all to be tolerant, peace-loving inhabitants of the earth, promoting justice and equality for all, and let us say amen.
Amen. Rabbi, if you could stay at the podium for us, and ladies and gentlemen, if you'll allow me, we do have a resolution that is on the agenda for tonight, and I'm going to ask Councilman Lachman, who has been leading our Holocaust remembrance ceremonies for the last few years, if he wouldn't mind reading that resolution for us to consider.
Recognizing the 75th anniversary of Auschwitz liberation, whereas on January 27th, 1945, Allied troops entered the Auschwitz concentration camp and liberated more than 7,000 still-living prisoners, whereas the Nazi regime killed approximately 6 million Jews, including 1.5 million Jewish children as well as millions of others, including mentally or physically disabled people, political prisoners, and resistance members, whereas approximately 2/3 of Europe's Jewish population was killed as a result of Nazi persecution during World War II, whereas at least 1,300,000 people were sent to Auschwitz between 1940 and 1945, approximately 1,100,000 of those of whom were murdered. The death toll includes 960,000 Jews, 865,000 of whom were gassed on arrival. Whereas there has been an increase in the number of antisemitic incidents around the world, in the United States, in the Hudson Valley, and in the town, which has increased feelings of vulnerability among our Jewish communities, and whereas antisemites in America and around the world continue to invoke Nazi ideology and use symbols such as a swastika and other fascist imagery to vandalize synagogues and Jewish institutions, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board honors the memory of the liberation of Auschwitz, and be it further resolved that the Town Board memorializes the 6 million Jewish victims of the Nazi regime, the millions of others who were systematically killed by the Nazis and their collaborators during World War II, and the over 1 million victims of Auschwitz, and be it further resolved that the York Town Board express gratitude to the members of the Allied forces whom liberated Auschwitz and the U.S. Armed Forces and the forces of the Allied nations who risked their lives to liberate many other Nazi camps and sites of incarceration, and be it further resolved that the Town Board urges all of its residents to commit to addressing intolerance and prejudice, including racial, ethnic, or religious biases, in order to combat all forms of bigotry and intolerance.
Motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, Rabbi Haber, I do want to present to you this resolution, which we had printed, for you to, I'll bring it over to you, that's okay, for you to bring over to the Habbat of Yorktown to share with your congregation. We will also be providing copies of the resolution in similar fashion to all of our Jewish houses of worship on behalf of the town to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz, but also to remind people that we may never forget about the atrocities that occurred and that we, as a community, stand strongly against all forms of hate and bigotry. Let me thank you for your help.
I thank you, and I thank the Town Board, and I thank the community and elected officials for your help in making sure this never will happen again. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. We have a rather lengthy agenda, so we are going to begin. First item on the agenda is the Town website, and I'm going to ask Robin Seimberg of our Planning Department to join us at the table. We have chairs here, and if we need more, we can bring them.
Hi, Robin.
Thank you for the...
Thank you for being here, Robin.
Our website's not working.
You'll see on the screens, over here on your right, all the board members on the left, some of the things that we're going to be showing you.
That's what's going to happen to you, Ed, if you tell any more stories.
I think this side's tilted towards the audience and this side's for us. Yeah, thank you.
I think we should lower the little light less, you know.
So what you see in front of you on the screen is the current Town of Yorktown website. You should, many people, I think, are familiar with it. The last time that the town upgraded its website was in 2013, so it's been about, well, seven years, not about, it's been seven years, and I believe it's time that we engage in that again. Thankfully, Robin manages our website, and we really appreciate all the work that she does on the day-to-day basis with those responsibilities. We also have staff members from each department who also assist in their individual departments in posting information for the public. But we do have an opportunity this year, and sometimes timing's everything, but we have spoken with our website vendor. Coming this year, they're going to be upgrading the system for all their platforms and all their websites.
Correct.
And so we would be included in that. We have engaged with them on a facelift. Do you want to show them some, do we have some of those samples?
Yeah.
So here is, and I think you can see the difference right up front. So this is Strausburg, Virginia. This is one of the model sites that were sent our way. Just, it's a full screen, a little bit simpler to navigate, but also includes a lot easier features to navigate. At the end of the day, I think, at least from my standpoint, we need our website to be user-friendly, whether you're doing business with the town or you're trying to find information, and also a, really a state-of-the-art communication tool for us to... The other ones, I'm just going to look it up. The one was Henrietta, right? Henrietta? And also make sure that our website properly communicates information to our residents proactively.
Well, let me type on the...
Okay.
I do have the...
So one of the, yeah, perfect. So another thing, another feature that we're looking at, this is, again, similar to ours, except one of the things that we've talked about in this community for a long time has been a community calendar. And actually, we have an opportunity right now as part of our facelift to implement a community calendar, as you see on the screen in front of you. This is from, I believe, Vancouver, Washington.
So this is our calendar now.
Mm-hmm.
It looks exactly the same.
Very similar.
Except for I have this sentence on the top that says, "You need to email us if you want to put something on it," and that's a manual...
Correct.
People email, I get the email, I have to add their event to the calendar. So the Vancouver site...
We automate it and streamline it, and people can submit directly to the Town website. It's monitored and controlled by our staff, and it's a simple click of the button, and it's automatically on the calendar.
But is there any, you know, additions or restrictions, what can and what not, the language and like that?
Yes. Well, it gets all reviewed before it goes online by our staff, so it is filtered to make sure that, A, it's appropriate, so we do have those safeguards in place, but it also, I think, just makes that process a lot easier for our staff, but it also allows us to create that community calendar. We have so many great organizations in the Town of Yorktown who continue to put on fantastic events. It's just another way to help them plan those events, to make sure, because we have had times frequently where we've had important events that are overlapping just out of a lack of communication, and it also puts everyone in one central location to see all the great things that are happening in the Town of Yorktown. So that is one of the features.
And how, yeah, how long in advance, Robin, they can input it? Six months advance or three months or like that, you know?
I don't think we know that information just yet.
No, no, individuals, some people like, you know, Foundation for Excellence on Lakeland, they put in, they make sure that we don't have some kind of conflict with Lakeland, Yorktown. So if it is there, they try to sort of, you know...
I don't think there'll be a restriction.
Anytime in the future.
No, no, not the restriction, but I'm just saying.
You go 10 years out if you know you have...
If you know you're having an event, yeah, by all means. But no, I think it's a fair question, though, because at the same time, you don't, you really want events that are 10 years out that things change dramatically.
Yeah, but the community event, two, three days at the same time, you know?
Yeah, right, right. But it is time, and I think that's the bottom line. It's something that I think is going to benefit the community tremendously. Right now, like I said, they're going to be upgrading the system for all of their webpages. So the Town of Yorktown, in addition to our annual fee, which is $3,000, would be paying $5,000 for that system upgrade. Timing is everything, and our vendor is willing to waive the $5,000 fee for the system upgrade and only charge us the 40, it's really 4,900 for the facelift. So we get two for the price of one. So the timing couldn't be any better. This, in theory, if all goes smoothly, we could be unrolling a new website for the Town of Yorktown this spring.
And, Robin, where would this be archived? In the town or somewhere in the cloud or...
It's in the cloud.
Okay, all right. Because, you know, if somebody don't have access at home with the cloud, they still go to the Town Web and then be able to...
Correct. That's the good thing about it, is whenever we've had power outages and storms here, this server is, you know, double reinforced, and it's in Texas, I think, so...
Then we have a snowstorm, Texas does.
That's a good thing.
These are very important, you know, things to be included, you know?
It's a big facility, because everything's bigger in Texas.
And so, again, we had a very initial conversation. There's other things that I'd really want us to explore. I want us to explore open data platforms, which is just going to make, you know, Town Government and Town Business more transparent. I also want to look at additional online portals using, in some of the systems that we currently already use, you know, one of which is Municity, which is what the Building Department uses. There are additional online features, I think, that we could be unlocking. Did you get it?
But then...
Oh, great. So this is, so this is another one. This is the Town of Henrietta. Again, you can see just, and if you want to, can you just toggle back to our website? I just want everyone to understand the difference. You can see, it's just easier to navigate through, it's just cleaner, it's a full, full...
Full screen.
Full screen, that's the word I was looking for.
It's actually, if it was wider than those, that menu would not be as much on top of the picture.
Mm-hmm. And also, they're all mobile. These are all mobile compatible.
Right, so as this gets thinner, it becomes a menu going down.
Right.
So if you're looking at on your phone, you would still be able to navigate.
Yeah, you'd still be able to navigate it easily on your phone, or if you're looking at it on a smaller screen, whatever it might be.
And then we had talked about these menus will give us an opportunity to put a lot more in the menu...
Correct.
...than we have currently, and we can make these categories.
They're all customizable, so whatever we want on those menus, we're going to be able to keep on those menus, so you'll see, and if you go, if you wouldn't mind, just like click on one of the, no, click on one of the lower links, because you'll see those top three menu options, they remain throughout, so it's easy, like I said, it's just a bit easier to navigate. There you go. And so you see on the top there, the government, community, and how do I remains. We have already discussed enhancing our search engine. What was the other thing that we had talked to them about? There was one other item that I'm missing. It was the calendar options.
Well, expiring of the calendar.
Right. One of the things right now, which they turned on for us, was if you had previously searched our calendar, you'd be getting events from like five years ago.
Right, and now, I've even, was testing it, it'll, if there's a press release for the event, that doesn't expire.
Correct.
But it's still only, the upcoming events are really showing. We have them expiring, I think, within three months, which means they're no longer on the calendar, so they're not going to keep coming up.
Continue to populate the search engines.
So we'll tell you about the light parade two years ago.
That's good, because I always get calls about the concert series saying, "Oh, you know, you're advertising this band, but I just looked online." It's like, that was from, that was from...
Yeah, right.
From 1992.
Right, and it also added to the search, it actually tells you when the item was posted. So, see, it says Alliance for Safe Kids, and it's for 182020. That's when the event is. So it's obvious right on top that that's 2020.
And that's our, that's our current website as it stands, not what necessarily would be...
We already added some of those things.
And surrounding community, if we have some common business, you know, like the schools, you know, the Croton, Lakeland, and then, you know, part of the Lakeland School, their activity will be added here too?
If they add it to the community calendar, absolutely would be added, yeah, which is the nice thing, again, because we're going to be able to...
County, something, you know, happening, some civil, you know, celebration, something like that, holiday, okay, so there's a nice calendar like this. Or maybe they can link.
Great idea, Vishnu, of, yeah, because I know like the county has a job fair tomorrow at the county center from 11 to 1:00, so if anyone's interested in that, but just to, just to be able to put that...
Yeah, it's just sharing information, proactively sharing information with our residents. And again, it's been seven years since we updated our website, yondu, and I think this is, you know, it's an exciting opportunity for us, and also, like I said, from a financial standpoint, you're getting two things for the price of one, because you're going to, we would have to pay the $5,000 for the system upgrade, even if we kept our website as it is. So in this case, we're getting the system upgrade and a facelift for the price of one. You know, you really can't...
Really, really, really for what we would have been paying anyway.
Yeah, and if, and if you include the calendar, the community calendar feature, we're going to pay the same exact dollar amount that was paid in 2013...
Yes.
...to get the, to get the facelift.
And it's more efficient for you, the new calendar, right?
Yeah.
It's not as laborious for you to have to put everything in all the time.
Yeah, if I'm busy, they don't, they wait a couple days.
Right.
Right.
You guys didn't have to be busy anymore, all right?
Any other questions, Councilman Patel?
Robin is good, all right.
Thank you.
Good. Any questions?
Nope.
So we're going to continue this conversation. We have a planning meeting set up with our vendor. I believe it's going, we wanted to have this conversation first, and now we're going to...
Right, and then we'll set that up.
Set up the planning meeting with our vendor, to give them some of the features that we definitely want to see on there. We're also going to be doing some new photography for the town to enhance our photos that we currently have, as you can see, something like that as the backdrop, but just another, another way of, you know, modernizing how we operate and how we present ourselves to the public.
Maybe we should do a photo contest to see about that in the town.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's one of the things that we had...
That's, the vendor mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, vendor mentioned that as well, yeah. That could be a very cool thing. I'm sure David Rocco would, you know...
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah, he really would.
Is there any, you know, direct link to the Yorktown school on Lakeland, because it goes there or you have to go through?
Yes. Well, I think that if we set it up the way we're going to set it up, it'll be less navigating to get where you need to go, because we do have information about the school districts, the churches, the organizations in town. It's just hard to get.
Just like we said today, the historic sites. The Historic Safe feature on our Town website, until Robin walked me through it today, because it takes you like three or four clicks to get there, you know, I think this is going to make it a lot easier to see. We talked about an interactive map for our parks.
Right.
You know, it's this way people can actually see, because they're, you know, folks are visual, as we all know, so it's actually, you know, go on a map and see the closest park to your house and see what amenities are there. I know that we have something similar, I think we have something somewhat similar.
We have some of it.
Actually, was it Henrietta had the map? I think it was Henrietta. You want to see if we can pull that up real quick? Was it government or, no, I think it was community.
This?
Yeah, the Trails Direct, Parks and Trails Directory. And so if you click, yeah, so it gives you a map of the town, it gives you, you can click on it, and it gives you information, you click on the link, click on the Link for Andrews Park. You know, so it gives you information right there, it gives you Google Map Directions from your phone, and there's additional, I think, enhancements that we can make to a page like this, but essentially, that's the direction that we want to go in.
And, you know, when you go any top Town website to Google back and forth, are there any commercial coming in between to interrupt your...
The video? Video content? I don't, I don't believe so, unless you're on YouTube.
It's really terrible, I tell you, you know?
Which, by the way, again, we are on YouTube, just as a reminder.
It's just unbelievable commercial, you know?
All of our social links, and then, of course, we got Tommy's YGTV. He's got a much bigger icon these days.
Tommy, could you step up to the mic and do that?
Yeah, please. Come to the mic.
Can we put his picture up there?
How much time people can spend it.
Any other questions about the website?
No. I think it's great. Thank you so much for the time you've got, you've put into, Robin, I know Matt...
Yeah, I think we have a ton of content that we can do better. Diana and I had worked on putting stuff for all the parks up there, and, you know, if we add the map, it just goes to those pages we already have, it's not a big deal.
We never not go to, Robin, that, you say, "Robin, I need this put on the website. Can you do it right away?" Magically, it appears there, you know, it's...
Great.
Thank you.
Robin, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Mike Quinn, Town Engineer. We're going to be discussing my new favorite topic, the Hallicks Mill Sewer District.
I thought Ed Mahoney would come as well.
Ed, can you please grab a chair? I know we have some residents in the audience tonight who are very interested in this, and so I think we have some information that...
Before you, you know, go away, February 4th, okay, the students will be coming. Thank you all, Kenny.
So last we left off, I just want to provide just a quick update for everybody.
Okay.
There was a resolution that was tabled at last week's meeting pertaining to, was a resolution, Diana, it was a resolution to set the public hearing.
So let me just walk you through the background to that. Do you want to introduce it first?
Yeah, so we had the, we tabled that resolution based on information that had been provided from the county Planning Department, as well as the conference call that you and I had with DEP, which was the previous Wednesday, and I thought that before we took any additional steps, we wanted to make sure that we had everyone on the same page and some, hopefully, approvals and direction from some of those, some of those partners in government. So if you want to bring everyone through what that hearing would do, what it means, and then if we can provide some updates to folks, I know that you provided data to DEP. Sounds like they were very happy with that data. If you can just give us a briefing as to where we are now.
Okay, very good. Just to back up to the board members, I mean, our, the basis of our project is this map plan report that was created by the Engineering Department. We did our sewer petition based on the specific information contained within this report. The numbers were 318 parcels that would be benefited by the Town Sewer Project. The total cost $14.3 million. Our project is based on receiving a $10 million grant from the East of Hudson Watershed, or the DEP Watershed Agreement. Those funds are on deposit with Westchester County and being administered by the Planning Department.
Which means, I don't mean to cut you off, which means Westchester County has to essentially approve the project to give us the money.
Well, I think that they're setting up the steps that are necessary in order for the funds to be transferred to Yorktown.
But they still, they authorize to transfer the funds because they hold the funds.
Ultimately, they do, correct. So we ultimately, in order to get the $10 million from the county bank account, if you will, to the Yorktown account, we have to execute an IMA, an intermunicipal agreement with the county. In order to do that, we have to involve the county attorney, and we have to work with the county planners on a couple preliminary steps to get there. Now, we had completed preliminary steps when the project was a little bit bigger. We originally were looking at 465 parcels, a $20 million project, but ultimately, when we prepared our map plan report, it was for a $14.3 million project, and so we went kind of backwards to get the DEP to re-review that aspect of it.
I'm sorry, again, not to interrupt you, can you give us a timeframe? When was the $20 million project proposed originally?
2017.
Okay.
So the DEP signed off on the project in 2017, and we were working with the county planners at that time, and there was an administration change within the county in 2017, is that 2018, 2017?
2017.
So people that we were working with have changed and were working with some new folks, and the new folks have laid out some new steps, and I think that's where we're kind of mired right now, is just trying to satisfy all of their requests so we can get this IMA in the works. So one of the things they asked us for was, well, can you go back to the DEP and make sure they're still in full support of your project? Supervisor and I had the conference call with the DEP. We followed up with them several times since our conference call, and they have, in fact, confirmed their full support of our project as currently proposed. It's a $14.3 million project with $10 million being allocated towards that project. So our next step now is to engage the county administration to make sure that the steps are being followed. I do have every expectation that we're going to satisfy their requests. I wish it was happening a little bit quicker, but we're going to continue down that path to get their authorization, and then we'll start that approval process, which will take some time. So in the meantime, we want to take, do some other background work, if you will, on the project. So in order to, like, kind of finalize the petition process and formally create our project, there's two steps that have to be done. The first one was the draft resolution that was prepared and that we're going to discuss tonight. In order to, for the Town Board to establish the project, you know, we have to have a public hearing. So the resolution would be to schedule a public hearing, and then at the, you know, let's say, next month, we would open a public hearing, we could hear from any members of the public that may oppose the establishment of the project. The meeting, you know, depending on the comments, the meeting would be closed and ready for action by the board. So that's a necessary step, and...
Is that, is that a step that we take, though, before we get indication from the county that they're going to continue to support the project?
Yes.
That's the concern, because we, at that point, when we were there on Tuesday last week, and the resolution was put forward, at that point, we were unclear on the level of support from DEP and Westchester County, and that's why we made the decision to table that resolution...
Okay.
...so that we can make sure that we had clarity on what their expectations were. Now, since then, DEP has come back favorably, which is great.
Right.
I know that there were still questions about, and some, and some questions and thoughts on the code in regards to enforcement that we've, that we learned about on the that we learned about on that call. I don't know if that's been resolved.
I can speak to that.
Yeah, please. That's what I'm asking.
All right.
Because you had to follow up with DEP.
You know, the DEP, when we were having our discussions with the DEP, they expressed a concern that if we put essentially five miles of new sewer in the ground, which would enable 318 parcels to connect to the town sewer, how many of those parcels would actually connect when we put the sewers in? Or, you know, would it take years or decades even for parcels to connect? We went back through some records in my department to kind of answer some of these questions because the town's been putting sewers in for the last 40 years. You know, sometimes a developer puts it in. I think Val Santucci put some sewers in that benefited some existing homes a while back. And what we found is something like 98% of people that can connect to town sewer because there's a sewer in front of their house have, in fact, connected. So I think, and, you know, knowing from our petition that there was very strong interest in the project, that we do understand and believe that people will connect to the town sewer. But I know that the prior supervisor, you know, in his presentation said that you're not required to connect. We want people to connect. And I think their concern was, what if a lot of people don't connect? And again, we went back through the data that we have. You know, people that are pumping out their septic's yearly or several times a year are experiencing, you know, problems with their system and they're likely, and we have something like 30% of those people that we're looking to put sewers on. So, you know, anecdotally, we know that people want to connect. Our data shows that people have, you know, septic systems that are nearing the end of their useful life. And so, you know, and based on our past experience with sewers, that's our approach. There is a, in our town code, in the sewer section, there is a section that says if the town, if a sewer is available and the town board passes a resolution directing people to connect, they have to connect within 90 days. That was part of a model sewer law that was adopted, I think, in the 80s, probably as a result of some other funding that the town was looking to receive. And so that is still in place. The boards have never, in history, have never exercised that requirement to, you know, get the 75 to 100 people that haven't connected that could. It's just over time. We issue something like 10 to 15 permits a year, you know, whether a parcel gets developed or a, you know, house changes hands, someone wants to be on sewer, you know, that's just what happens. So we probably pick up 10 to 15 a year. And, you know, over time, you know, we're nearing 100% saturation. So I would expect this project would be very similar. However, that is where we've been questioned by the county that says, hey, if we put $10 million towards your project and a lot of people choose not to connect in the first couple of years, you know, then that won't be a great success for us trying to get people off of their septic and trying to improve the environment. So that's a little bit of what we're working on. This issue's been discussed and addressed. And one of the things that we were working with the county on, which we're still working with the county on, is they have excess funds. They, right now, have funds that they make available to someone that has to do a major septic repair. I don't know exactly the qualifications on that, if it's income-based or whatever, but they do have funds available. And they were looking to expand the use of those funds. So someone that wanted to, like, just get off of their septic and connect to a town sewer, they could access these funds. So that was something that we thought would be wonderful. It would benefit Yorktown residents as well as other towns in northern Westchester. So they, in fact, the county planner came to one of our public information hearings. She actually spoke to that, that the county is not, hasn't not announced the program yet, but they are working behind the scenes on some such incentive-type program. So the only other thing we discussed with them possibly would be we would have to use some of our $10 million to help people connect or to encourage people to connect, some type of incentive. You know, we'll have to look to find out what exactly they're looking for.
Again, if we use, this is my concern. If we use a portion of the $10 million, you're changing the financing of the project, which, what does that do to the petition?
Well, it would potentially increase the cost unless.
What does that do to the petition? Does that not change the petition?
It potentially could.
Right. So my concern is, and this is just my concern. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But if we're going to continue to move, and I understand the importance of dual-track this way, we're not, you know, delaying. But if we don't have final approval from the county and we're moving resolutions forward for a public hearing, ultimately, the county come back to us and say, you need to use a portion of your $10 million, which changes the financing, which changes the petition. So then we're right back at square one and having to put another petition on the street.
Right. Well, I think that if we pass this resolution, which just establishes the project, it could be undone. If fun, you know, we could put a contingent on the receipt of a $10 million grant. And if that doesn't happen, then we would have to, you know, redo this project. However, should the county come back with some type of, hey, you have to dedicate some of your $10 million towards getting people incentivized to connect, at the same time, we're going to be doing some work over the summer on, you know, getting more certainty on our costs. So right now, we have a significant contingency in our numbers. So it's very possible that once we get some more certainty in our numbers, that the total project cost would be a little bit less. Because the next time we do an estimate, we'll have less contingencies involved. You know, our contingency assumed a significant amount of rock excavation. So we could be doing some more borings to find out, hey, is there going to be a lot of rock excavation? Any contractor that's going to bid the work is going to want to know, am I digging in sand or am I digging in rock? Because there's significant differences in the cost for excavation.
I don't think in this case, though, we can have, like, a lot of uncertainty because of, like Matt said, if they come back in and they want to play with that, you know, well, use X amount, use 10% towards that. We're just really in the sewer with this whole project.
Well, I think that, you know, there's going to be some bumps and, you know, I would strongly advocate to keep pushing forward because the other thing which I wanted to mention is that once we pass this resolution, which is, you know, for discussion, there's a second resolution that needs to be passed, which is our financing resolution. And we can talk about that in a few minutes. But once those two resolutions are passed, meaning the board has formally established the project, the board has formally agreed we're going to borrow up to $4.3 million, we can then meet with the EFC, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, up in Albany. We had a prior meeting with them about a year ago. And they said, hey, you have a great project. We'd be interested in funding your project. If you qualified, if we were to select you for one of our grants, it would be a 25% match of your unfunded part. So if we submitted $4 million or $4.3 million in a grant request, we potentially could receive up to 25% of that number, a million dollars, towards our project. That project, no, you know, if we were lucky enough to get a grant of that magnitude, we could look at incentives or reducing the total cost for everybody. So those are options. And so the one option is a grant. The second option is they have financing. So we could look at bond financing through EFC, you know, even.
But does that bond financing then, again, change the financing that was part of the petition?
Well, it would only change it for the better, right? So we're going to, like, we assigned, the number we have in this petition is $750 per year for 30 years on a payback, per parcel. So if we could bring that number in at $650, we don't need to do another petition. But if we're going over $750, we'd have to go back and do a new petition. So, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces here. But, I mean, from my, speaking to other engineers in this area, I mean, like, this is, first you define your project. Most towns, like, they'll define a $14.3 million project and then they'll go chase $10 million in funding and the projects on the books until they can find this financing.
How did they do it in Peach Lake? Did they establish the project first and then went for funding?
No, because.
Or did they have everything lined up? And then they had, they had the money lined up and then they established the project?
Peach Lake, which was done, you know, going back eight or 10 years now, they, they had a $10 million commitment from this east of watershed fund. And the county gave it to them without a lot of strings attached. So we're being held to a higher standard because we didn't seek the money back then and there was all different players and different administrations and different processes in place back then. Bedford is the more recent community that has a $10 million. You know, their project, they've got all their IMAs executed, also done with the prior administration and not subject to some of the scrutiny that we're getting, but.
But did they establish the project first or did they, or did they secure their financing first?
Well, their project, I don't know the exact answer to that question. I'd have to, like, talk to those guys a little bit deeper. But they got $10 million and then they created a project.
So they got their financing first?
Yes.
So can I ask you something? If we do not make the commitment right away on this number, 318, then we are putting the brick for the town board member, okay? We have to learn. Money, if they want to have a septic, will they need to spend the money? Just like you buy a house, you know, a car. We have to tell them that this will cost, and then if something comes up really, actually additionally, is great, you know, then they'll reduce the cost, providing their service, you know, because it is not only they helping us, it's helping all the reservoirs in New York City. So there will be some way of incentive for them, the state, even the county, to help us out, you know? But if you, you know, you put the brick over here, then it's not going to go nowhere. Because six years ago, oh, I can get the 40 million sewer everybody free for nothing. I mean, you cannot start the rumor like this, you know, in a newspaper. I mean, it's really, it's sad. I think we should just pull sleeves up and.
Well, we have been. And that's why we got DEP.
I know, because, you know, I've been involved in this sewer business for a long, long time. And not all this detail, but people want it. And I think we should let them know that it will cost them money because, you know, just throw back and forth.
No, that's my concern is we told them how much money it was going to cost.
Yeah, so this is good, you know.
My biggest fear is that we've told them it's going to cost them $14.3 million.
Yeah, that's good.
And what happens if they come back and say, no, Matt, it's going to cost you $15.3 or $16 million? Guess what? That cost goes up for them.
But at the same time, you know, if there is something available, a lower-cost loan or some kind of subsidy, whatever you want to call it is, that will reduce the cost because the New York State is spending a lot of money.
I know they are.
On the mountain.
I don't disagree.
To bring the groundwater. And if there is no potable water, bottled water is more expensive.
I agree with you completely.
Thank you.
But in the two cases.
No, I understand, you know, what you're concerned.
In the two cases that we've brought up, which is Bedford and North Salem and Peach Lake, they secure their financing first and then establish their project.
Because, you know.
But in this case, we're kind of doing it.
North Salem got multiple, they got more than the $10 million. I'm sure that they created their project with this $10 million grant. But it was like a $40 million project, so they received other grants.
I understand that.
I doubt they had every grant before they moved the project forward. But I could get back to you on that. The resolution before you tonight doesn't actually get into the financing because that was.
There's no resolution.
That was going to be the subject. Well, I thought that this was what we.
No resolution before us tonight. That's the top of conversation.
Yeah, it was a draft resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not voting on a resolution tonight.
Right, but it's a draft resolution that doesn't discuss the financing because that was going to be the subject of the second resolution.
I understand.
So I think we need more input or more buy-in from the county in order to, you know, finalize that second resolution.
So the recent new special person is going to be in charge of a countywide, some Keplo reference to the sewer.
That's correct.
Maybe we should invite him to give us just some more, what he knows, you know?
So I spoke with, I spoke with him today.
Yeah.
He provided some incredible and very useful information and guidance that we're going to follow up on.
Great.
I agree with you. Let's roll up the sleeves.
Absolutely.
And I'm not trying to stop this project. I want to make sure it's done right.
No, 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 I mean, you know, we all have intention.
Yeah, you've got people who are incredibly vested in this, in this project. You've got people who've been fighting for this project for 20 years. Some of those people are in the audience tonight.
And, you know, they want to, they want, these, some of the places are very difficult. They have difficulty leaving their home and they will be happy to leave in their home and will be happy to pay the taxes. And when they sell it, they will have their value increased. So, you know, it is a very complicated process. But I don't want to hear some kind of rumor or somewhere else. People say, oh, they're not going to put a brick. Please don't hear that kind of rumor.
No, listen, no one's trying to stop the project.
No, I'm just saying it. I'm just saying to the board, you know.
Do you establish the project first?
Yeah.
Or do you secure your financing first?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That seems to be the debate that we're having here.
Okay. I mean, I would advocate to establish a project while we work out the details of the funding. I mean, we haven't incurred additional, we're not going to incur any additional cost until the financing is resolved.
Right.
I think that once you do the petition, you need to follow this path in order to, you know, you got to have like a timeline. I don't have like the exact dates, but I know that we are being advised by bond counsel that once you do your petition, you need to follow up. Either you're going to establish the project or you're not. Eventually, we'll just run out of time and we'll have to redo the petition regardless because we never acted on the first one. So.
Have you had that conversation with bond counsel, Mr. Rodriguez?
I have not.
It was with the prior town attorney, but we've had several conversations, you know, professional advice, if you will, guiding us through the process.
You know, my fear is that of Matt's also is that, you know, we don't get this done in a more expedient fashion, that this price is going to go up, similar to what we have with the fluoride project. You know, it went up another $150,000. We're talking about a $1 million project opposed to a $10 million or $14 million project now. project opposed to a 10 million or 14 million dollar project now. And as you had said before, we're gonna go out and do the test pourings for the contractors?
Well, what we can do.
And outline, and, and I don't mean to interrupt, Mike, and, and outline where they may have possible out rock, outcroppings, et cetera, or is that something that, that, because in the contingency, do, you know, do we have that money? Do we have that already built in there and we're gonna subtract that possibly? Is that what I'm to understand?
We don't have that money right now.
Right.
Or will it spend?
Right, exactly.
Because that, the 14.3 million isn't sitting in a bank account.
Well, well, the worst, the worst part, the worst part about the whole thing, and I think this is probably the biggest fear, it's not the 14.3 million, it's the 10 million.
Right.
And if they come across the table and say, well, we're giving you nine, even if they come across and say 9.5, that still changes everything, it changes, changes what we have to put out.
Can we expedite, can we, is there a way, you said that you wanna get firmer, more firm and accurate cost projections, can we do that sooner than later? Is that possible?
I could take a look at that, I mean.
Well, no, listen.
We hired professionals to give us, you know, the report, which was delivered last, or two years now in the summer, but a year and a half ago, so, I mean, this, the numbers 14.3 million were the, were the basis from, from where that came from, that, that's where that came from.
But you, but you also said you padded that number.
Yeah, well, there's, there's contingencies in those numbers, a purchase like a 30% or whatever the numbers are, there's significant contingency, when you're at a planning level study.
Right, right, right.
You include those numbers, so you don't have any surprises, we don't wanna see a 14.3 million dollar project come in over budget to town point, so we carry contingencies, and then, you know, as we get more deeper into design and more certainty, you know, how deep the pipes are gonna be and questions like that, then, you know, we have more certainty, we feel more confident to reduce the contingencies. It would be, it would be just, because it's a planned project, I think it's a little too early to think that we could do a project that we estimate a 14.3 for something less.
So can I just say something else now? You know, these people, those, those are really would like to have a sewer, some of them resident, they have no idea that if you are on the bottom of the hill, you need to build a pump, so, oh, I pay the taxes, you know, I don't get it, and so all this thing needs to be communicated to the people, really, it's very, very critical.
Well, they did have two public.
So you know, if you think that, you know, somebody.
You could tell people on their parcel by parcel if they would be on a pump or a gravity.
Yeah, but you know, people don't know, really, hey, I pay the taxes, I should have everything, it's very difficult, you gotta go talk to the people, and somebody has a problem with the money, I mean, so, I'm living there, okay?
I hear you.
I mean, is there any harm in, in passing the resolution to establish the project at all?
No, not that I can see.
It's no cost.
Because we're not bound to proceed with a project, we're following a good administrative step to confirm, you know, with the clerk's office, the sewer petitions that were, came in, obviously they'll be docked.
The town clerk does, you can not confirm the petitions, you have more confirmative petitions, and we do that through the public.
The formal, I strongly, I strongly disagree with that point.
That's my conversation with bond counsel.
Okay. I strongly disagree with that, okay? The sewer petitions have to be certified by the clerk's office, and that's, and that was going to be done in this next resolution.
So, I think we have to get that clarified.
I, I reached out to her several times, but we, we can have this discussion right here, it's fine.
Well, we should have something from the county then, you know?
We have. Say that again, and.
The notice that was put on the last agenda.
Yeah.
And that is the notice that bond counsel sent us as the next step. Okay, well, now, my discussion with him is, he says the town clerk does not certify petitions, the town board does.
So by establishing the project, so by establishing the project, we certify the petition, that's what you're telling me?
That's the long term, it was the resolution he sent us, that's what he said it was our next step.
And then no cost, right? At that stage.
So my suggestion is, let's have a conversation with bond counsel.
No, I completely agree, I mean, we, we have to, we have to make sure that we understand that what our internal process is first before we, before we take the next step, so, I agree with you, Diana, that we, we do need to have that conversation, and, and Mr. Rodriguez, if I can ask you to please be part of that conversation as well.
Certainly.
So that we have clarity on what our internal process is, and whether it's the town board or the town clerk that certifies the petition, and then we can establish the project.
And, you know.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think the town board is going to pass the resolution, I'm not suggesting that the town clerk would pass the resolution, however, the, the resolution that's being prepared would certainly be with the data that came through her office for the, the signed petition, so, I, maybe we're saying the same thing, but the results have to be certified.
But I understand that.
In a resolution that you, the town board would pass.
I, I understand that.
Okay, then we're all.
But the certification is now, we just need clarity from bond counsel to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we understand that by passing the resolution, it does, does explicitly one, two, three, and four. Right now, we're debating amongst ourselves what that even does, so we just need greater clarity from our legal team to understand what it is this resolution actually does, and it still doesn't even solve the problem of our financing, but if the board is, is agreeable to move that resolution forward, once we have that clarity from our legal team, then that's a conversation and that's an action that we can take next week.
But isn't this to establish the priority, the dates, because that is also very important, right? You have the date, January 2020 or, you know, 30.
No, no, I don't think this establishes.
The date, isn't it the date is very important to establish the project? Because there is no cost.
No, that's for the public hearing.
No, after the public hearing, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because there is no cost after the public hearing, right? There is no cost, so this will be one more step forward.
At the end of the day, we have to make sure we understand our internal process.
Yes, yeah, alright.
Before we can take any formal action, and it's clear that there's some disagreement there, so let's get that clarified, and then we can, if we agree.
Revisit it next week.
We can revisit it next week, we can put it back on the agenda for next week, and if we decide to table it next week, then we table it again next week, but if we can get that clarification before next week and the town board is, is agreed on taking that next step, then we can do that, is that, is that.
Yeah, no, no, this is.
I'm totally fine with that.
But you know, Michael, please always make sure that to clarify the audience and the people that see the required process, and we have to take a step, not the elevator, and at the same time, there is no cost, because this established the priority for the project, that's it, I'm not saying anything else.
Oh, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's exactly right, I, I'll continue to make that clear, but that's exactly right, there is no, no cost at this time.
There's no, there's no cost in passing the resolution.
No, project cost is there, the project cost is there, you know?
We all agree on that.
Yeah, okay.
We all agree on that.
Thank you, yeah.
We need to stand by the process, we need to understand that process, then we need to execute that process. Right now, we're still one and two, we're still.
Yeah, there's a few lingering questions apparently, so.
We're still lingering, so.
No, because I had the headline, I'm gonna give the whole town the sewer for a 40 million dollar, you know?
Anything else regarding the Hallock Mill Sewer Extension? Any questions, gentlemen?
Just, just to, to solidify, you did get DEC on board now?
DEP, thank, and, and again, I wanna thank Mr. Quinn, DEP by seeing the data that was provided by our engineering department acquiesced on their concerns from, that, we heard on our conference call last, last Wednesday, so they've, so that's very good for us, because we're gonna be able to leverage that with the county, that was the whole idea, correct, Mr. Quinn? So, again, so there's very positive steps, but there's also a lot of confusion still as to the process.
Right, sure.
And what our next steps as a board need to be, and there's also some confusion, I think, that remains regarding the county and what their reception is to the project. Now, I can tell you that I've already spoken, again, I've spoken with people on the county level, I've spoken with our county legislators, so they are being engaged in this to provide us the support, which I think is, is very important, they've been very receptive, very willing to help, so I think we're playing both the inside and the outside game here, which I think is only beneficial to the town, but we just need to make sure that we understand as the governing body what our next steps are and what do those steps actually mean in regards to this project, because it's, it's clear that we're not all working off the same page.
No, not even in the same book, I think.
I think right now, we probably just need the timeline actually structured, so we're, we're at this point, we have to get to this point, kinda like the thermometer when somebody's building funds.
So that might be helpful to the board then, if we just not only like, right now, I mean, obviously it's a draft resolution, but maybe the whole process being laid out might be helpful, like this would be step one.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously it'd be great to see the full process, and this way we've got benchmarks to know where we're going, I mean, rather than, you know, it's, it seems like it's being passed together.
Well, I mean, I've kinda verbally laid it out, but I, maybe it'd be helpful to have it in a page summary.
But I also think we need to make sure that our legal team is involved in that conversation to avoid any.
I mean, I would love that, of course.
Any misunderstanding, you know, that may, that may arise.
Yeah, we don't wanna get tripped up by any, anything like that, so.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna conclude with Hallock Mill Sewer Project, and I do really wanna thank you for your work, I know it's, it's been tremendous, and we're gonna move over to our.
Pump station.
Pump station updates.
All right, so Ray Schofield from GHD is, is here, he's going to, I think, grab a chair and join us to give you.
Ray, please.
A quick update on our pump station project, which I know, you know, has been the subject of a couple of town board updates, and.
Oh, sorry, what was that, Tom?
Wrong spot.
You guys, sorry, the man behind the curtain, don't get him angry, the man behind the curtain is asking for your shift, thank you.
Pretty sure you'd be sitting with Mr. Rodriguez.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, so give us the update on the pump stations.
So the, the latest update on, on the pump station project is that one of our stations, Walden Woods, is now operational, and so we're running on the new pump station, and we're in the process of demolishing the old pump station, and we'll be wrapping that, that up shortly, so that, that's officially done now.
The demolition of the old pump station is done.
Fence up.
Fences up.
In the right spot.
Thank you, Mr., thank you for your help on that, Mr. Mahoney.
So there, there's two other pump stations that are part of the project, Jefferson Valley and Jefferson Park pump stations, and essentially the contractor completed all the work, and in order to start the final, the check out the testing and turn the station on, we have to call the health department for their final inspection. The health department came out and they, they had a couple of issues with some changes that were made while the work was going on, and I know Ray, Ray could speak to it a little bit, but essentially, you know, and just to back up a little bit here, before the work was started, GHD did all the design documents, they were submitted to the health department for review and approval, we received their initial approval in January of 2017, and so that authorized the town or gave the town approval to do the work, and basically it says that, you know, you have to follow the plans exactly as we approve them, and when you're done, you have to call us back out there to do a final inspection before you actually turn the equipment on. So we, we kinda got hung up now where we called them back out there and there were some, some field changes that were done, which I think Ray will speak to, as, you know, whether they're, they're major or minor, I think certainly people on our side, Ray and I tend to agree, these changes were relatively minor, they're typically picked up in as-built drawings, that would be issued after the fact, however, the health department wrote us a letter that said, hey, you're in violation because you made these changes and you didn't have our approval, and therefore, we want you to come into the health department, we're giving you a notice of hearing, which potentially could subject the town to, to a fine, so, you know, that, that's a little bit of background that I have on this.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, so we're potentially being fined because paperwork that we did not control was not properly submitted?
That's possible.
I just wanna make sure, but that's, that's what we're talking about here.
So.
Potentially, the town, the town is being fined because our contractor, no offense, did not properly submit paperwork to the Department of Health.
Well, what the, let me just clarify that a little bit, all right, because the, the inspector, who, who I've, I met out there, said, look, somebody, you know, let this happen, or, you know, whether it's the town, the contractor, or the engineer that's been overseeing the work, someone, you know, has to, to speak to why this work was done without our approval. So the town received the violation, the contractor received the, the same notice, and the, and the engineer, GHD, received the same notice, so we're all being asked to appear at a hearing on February 11th at the health department's office to discuss the matter and hopefully get it resolved, but potentially, yeah, the town or, or one of the other parties may be fined as a result of this, and again, I just wanna be fully transparent with the board about, you know, what's going on, so.
What, I just wanna make sure I understand, though, what is the town role, if we have a contractor, and this project's being managed by a contractor, what's the town role in submitting proper paperwork to show changes in the project?
Well, I don't think that, we don't have, I mean, essentially, our role was given to GHD, and we're paying them to fulfill that role.
So again, what is our role? So we don't really, so you're telling me we didn't have a role, it wasn't a town, town responsibility to submit the changes to the health department that were being cited on?
Well, I think that the town's responsible, the town is responsible, in, in an agreement that we have with GHD, we gave our responsibility to GHD, GHD prepared contract drawings and, you know, it ties the contractor to some of these requirements as well.
Was it the responsibility of your department to hand over to the Department of Health the changes?
No, it was not.
Okay, thank you.
But do you have to keep an eye on step by step?
Well, we, we have, I mean, I mean, Ed's involved on a daily basis, we have monthly progress meetings, so we, we've been engaged, we've been involved in the project, so yeah, we, we've been aware of it.
What, what were the changes? Or is that what Ray's gonna talk about?
Yeah, I was gonna let you talk to some of the changes unless you want me to.
I can talk to the changes if you guys wanna hear them, so.
Yeah, please.
So there was a pump selection at Jefferson Park, that had to be changed due to operation points when we got the shop drawings, so we considered that to be a small change, it was actually a pump model, one model down from the pumps that were approved in the DOH approval, there was a Fernco fitting installed at Jefferson Valley.
Well, this is, this is one at a time here, right, so the pump was, when, when the health department gave us approval, it was for a specific brand and a specific model number.
Right.
I guess the brand came correct, but the model number was slightly changed to meet a field condition, and again, they, they considered that to be a minor change, but that technically should have been.
Right, if we went to a lower model, the board of health will look at that, if we went to a higher model, they might be willing to pass that, but you said it was a lower model.
Well, I think the guy basically went and said, well, the model in my plan says model X, and you have a model Y, that's not the same as what we approved.
Either way.
I'm sorry, yeah, councilman.
Either way, the higher road, I don't know, they can find your objection?
They, they objected, right.
Traditionally, though, when you make that change, what is the process that you normally take?
So normally when we're doing these processes, the changes at the end of the job are submitted with the engineer's certificate of completion, so at the end of the job, just like we did with Walden Woods, we submit a certificate of changes and we request that the station can go live. We did that with Walden Woods, but during that process, the health department requested that all these changes come in. Now, to go back to this pump, the design pump had a flow rate of 50 GPM, we changed through the design to 48 GPM, so this is not a big change, no red flags, excuse me, on our side came up, like, hey, this is a major change, if we would've went through this and found like, uh-oh, this isn't gonna work, we need to put in 100 GPM pump, that would be a different story, that's not a minor change, that's a very big change.
But if there is a new additional homes or businesses will be connected in the future or whatever, you know, then, so they may have some kinda upper and lower limits, and so I don't know, you know, what is that?
Well, and that's a great point, however, Jefferson Park is a very restricted basin, there's 37 homes, it's a fully built-out subdivision, no more developments going in there, so that's, it's locked in, so it's a unique basin for sewers.
What other changes were made to Jefferson Park?
Jefferson Park, there was a minor change in the force main connection to the existing force main, because the force main in the record drawings was not in the proper location.
So basically, the field conditions didn't match what was, what the drawing showed, right, and so there was a modification made at that time?
Just the movement or the placement of the pipe?
Was it size of the pipe, like eight inch or 10 inch or something?
That was the gravity source, that would be the next one we get into, it was location of the existing force main and the existing force main connection to Jefferson Park, so we had to shift it over five feet, and that was the change, well, it actually was over five feet from what it was shown in the record drawings that we received.
Okay, what else was changed, Joe? Sorry, yeah, councilman.
I'm sorry, to restrict the flow, whatever the flow by moving it, because of the slope or anything, what was really the, is there any reason to do that?
No, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. Force main move. No, that shouldn't be an issue. Now, what was that, it, was it a larger pipe, smaller pipe, or just movement of the pipe?
Force main was just location, just location only, existing force main was in a different spot than the record drawings, and a valve was added in order to facilitate bypass pumping.
But no change in the, in the slope of the pipe entering to exiting?
There may have been changes, but it's a force main, so it's not as, it's not a gravity sewer, gravity sewer is highly sloped.
What other changes in Jefferson Park?
There was, so the influence sewer line coming in from the road was four inch, the record drawings from the town indicated it was eight inch, it was 43 feet of pipe, so that would've been a flow restriction, so in coordination with the town, we said it'd be a good idea to replace this to an eight inch, town said yes, we put in the eight inch pipe, it's a better solution for the town, and it meets the appropriate design standards for West Chicago Health Department.
And, and so your department signed off on the eight inch pipe?
Yes.
Anything else for Jefferson Park?
The health department wants to put in fences there now, which were not in the original group draw.
And that, they weren't in there, because the neighbors didn't, they didn't want a fence there, that's why we took it out, we tried to explain it to them.
So it's a lockable building, apparently during design, the neighbors didn't wanna see a fence around the facility, the plans don't show a fence around the facility, when the plans were originally approved by the health department, it did not include a fence around the facility, and now he's saying there has to be a fence around the facility, I'm not sure what the justification is, other than he says it's for security, it's necessary for security.
When you say he, you mean the inspector?
The inspector from the health department, right.
I don't think it's you.
And Mike, is there any code on that that we were able to find?
He referenced a generic code, adequate provision shall be made to effectively protect plant personnel and visitors from hazards, he's saying that generic statement requires a perimeter fence.
You would think that if it was a locked building that nobody could get into, that would kind of prohibit the intrusion of persons.
I mean, I will say that most of our facilities do have chain link fences around them. The other station that we're doing, Walden Woods, is going to, is having a fence around it.
I think part of the problem in this area was the kids were, was the old fence slatted, where they were used to graffiti and...
No, that was never a fence.
That was no fence.
No fence on that one.
All right, then there was, and remember, there was a graffiti issue at one of them.
What was the county's response? You told them that the reason there's no fencing is because of the neighbors?
Well, we had a brief discussion in the field on that. We have not responded back to this letter yet.
Okay. What else in Jefferson Park?
So we had a T on the piping in the pump station itself. There should have been a blind flange for emergency bypass, but the supplier of the pump station didn't supply that T with the emergency bypass blind flange.
So that change, I mean, we were, we certainly were not advised of that change, but should that change be done?
It's in the original contract drawings that were approved, so that's just, we have to get...
So the inspector noted something that was on the original plans. It should have been built that way, and it will have to be corrected to match it.
Is that a minor change?
It's a relatively minor change. The station hasn't been put in use, so to change a fitting and put a blind flange on it, that should be a problem.
He wants it at Walden too. But I had the guy from Carmel-Winewater out there, I think it was yesterday, and I got a price on a flange that, you know, I think we can maybe pitch that. It's a couple hundred dollars. You know?
I would just say, I, we should have a discussion.
No, he wants a whole, yeah, he wants a whole, I just doing what he asked, because he was asking me about it. Instead of taking pipes apart for something we may never use, I think it'd be, you know, we could have the parts there in case we ever need it. Wouldn't be hard to put it in.
Mike, does this cover with the insurance if some failure, you know, occurs in an operation of the pump? Because if you don't have the original, you know, bypass something, and the damage occurs to the neighbor's property, they're going to sue the town, you know?
Well, again, the design was such that we were going to bypass the pump station. So it has to be fixed. We agree with that comment. Because that change will be made.
What else in Jefferson Park?
Um, there was a comment that was brought up on the force main velocities not in compliance with the 10-state standards.
Wait, I'm sorry, with that, what was that?
10-state standards.
So that's a regulation that governs pump station designs. You want to speak to the background to that?
Is it also a minor change?
So, the original pumps that were there did not meet the 10-state, the regulation. The proposed pump that was originally approved by the Health Department also did not meet that standard, because it's such a small location for that, you know, sized pump. It was better than it was in the old pump, but it wasn't going to meet that requirement, and the Health Department approved it that way. So we're not that clear on why they're bringing it up now, because it's already been approved. If we put the pump they specified, it wouldn't match that either. So it just seems like it's a kind of a technical violation there. I mean, is that correct to say, or?
Well, and kind of with where we're sitting right now, I would prefer not to say until we have time to thoroughly review it. We can talk with town personnel.
Okay.
And, I mean, we do have an administrative hearing pending, so.
Okay.
What else in Jefferson Park?
Um, that should be everything covered in Jefferson Park.
We have six in Jefferson Park.
Yes.
Okay. What about Jefferson, do you have?
Jefferson Valley is a much shorter list. There was a Fernco fitting installed there. That is the Health Department's main concern, is that Fernco fitting. Just to give everybody some background, the wet well configuration had to be, it was flipped to accommodate a better operation for the town and to help facilitate bypass pumping, which required a new manhole to go in place for the bypass pumping. The contractor came and said, we're going to throw this in, and by the way, it's asbestos pipe coming in and not CIP pipe. So we proposed to put in a Fernco fitting. It was accepted because we have differential sediment in this location, there's a high risk of fracturing ACP pipe, because ACP pipe is fragile. The Health Department is coming back and saying, the Fernco they don't want, they want to use the mechanical fitting on that location.
Thoughts, Tony?
Fernco is a valuable option on that particular type of pipe. Like they say, you start cutting in on that stuff that's aged as it is, and it does start fracturing. Sometimes you have the linear cracks and so on and so forth that are inherent to that particular material. You know, they want to use a mechanical fitting such as a, the hub and, or they want to use a...
They're, they want us to, they want a mechanical joint coupling to be installed, so it has the gland plaque, like you would see on a normal...
Right.
...CIP fitting.
Okay. What else in Jefferson Valley?
That was, if I'm not, I don't, I think that's everything on Jefferson Valley, just that one item. I didn't bring this letter with me because I didn't want to get into the details tonight.
They were saying the identification tag for the grinder pump specifies 100 feet, not 105 feet. So, the output of the...
Oh, yeah, it's, you got the, it's one of the 20, when was the latest one?
January 23rd. I have a copy right in front of me.
I have the one of the 15.
Right, it says that one of the, the pump was supposed to have a discharge head of 100 feet, not 105 feet.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that one came from. I, that's a clarification, we can get back to the Health Department.
You know what I find interesting is that now, it seems like, that's okay. Is it Mr. Estramera, I mean, would he actually go down in the hold in the submersible pump area to pull this pump out, or is he, is he mad at us for something?
He wanted the pump pulled out of the wet well, so it was brought up to the surface, so he, and he could, wanted to inspect the nameplate.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Our guys did the work, actually, right.
I mean, especially for, you know, a seven GPM, or was it seven or four GPM difference, it seems. Two GPM.
And we had a spare that's somewhere, not on the site somewhere.
Yeah.
That's what he wanted, so we did it.
Interesting.
I know that you had sent correspondence to GHD. Have you received a response?
Uh, no formal response, no.
So what is it next now? You are going to work together, or?
I think you guys are, you guys are stuck into the hearing, correct?
Well, so where we're at right now is we're, we've been diligently working on this since we got the letter Friday morning. So last Friday, we received this letter, we've been working on this. So we are continuing to work on it, we still have a few other items to refine. I plan on giving Mr. Estramera a phone call tomorrow morning to have a few discussions, preliminary discussions with some of the things we've identified thus to date. Then we are going to have to have a discussion with the town to kind of see how we need to approach this and move forward. So we're doing fact finding, we're putting a strategy together. I did ask Steve Montgarmy to reach out to you, Mr. Rodriguez, I don't know if he's done that yet.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. You'll probably be getting a phone call from him at some point, kind of help on the strategy. So that's kind of where we're at, and that's where we're going. Our ultimate goal, and I think the goal of the town as well, I think we're all maybe in alignment with this, is to make sure that we get the stop work order lifted, we get approval to do testing, to get the contractor moving again, and get these pumps accepted. Then we can deal with the administrative hearing and how that...
You think you can get the stop work order lifted before the hearing?
I have no idea. I...
But that's what we're, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Trying to resolve every comment that they have.
So, okay, so we're trying to, the goal is to lift the stop work order and then go to the hearing.
Get the contractor, because ultimately, we got to get the station completed, we got to get the contractor on his way, and we have to deal with this administrative hearing on the side, so.
Mr. Mahoney, how long has this been going on? How long have you been working? I know you've been...
You're a day or two.
...involved in these projects. How long has it been going on?
What, the project?
Well, the three pump stations.
The three, it started September 18.
September 18. Okay.
How long will be, the services will be down? If you do the remediation or replacement of anything, needs to be done?
Well, the stations will be run 24, they're going to be continuous.
No, 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 oh, I saw there'll be some way of...
Right now, we have temporary pumps running the system.
Oh, okay, there is no need to shut down anything.
Anything else from the council, the town board?
Just one other thing. What are the expected fines if it should? What are the expected fines if all these should be found? Do you have any idea?
In the notice, it said $250 per violation. Whether this is one violation or several is, you know, remains to be seen, but...
Yeah.
That's what it says in there, in the paperwork.
And if I may, all of these things I listed with the changes are not all violations.
They're not all violations?
In the actual administrative hearing notice, I believe there is only three violations listed. One of those, we've already submitted the paperwork to get that one turned around, and that's the lapse of the approval for construction.
Good. All right, so it sounds like you're on it.
February 11th is the...
February 11th is the...
Where are you guys having it?
It's in Mount Kisco. I could forward you the invite if you want to just have it in your calendar.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Do you have to go, Mike? Do you have to go?
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Mike has to go. Mike has to go.
Yeah. Mandatory.
Do you want, are you going to?
Anything else on the pump stations?
Well, I think they wanted to speak to one other matter, which was their, they had submitted an amendment going back to last September, due to the fact that the job has run late. And I, again, I don't want to speak for GHD right now, but just want to remind you that back in September, they submitted a request for $85,000, $87,000. And there was some back and forth with the board, some questions that were asked. They were asked to take a look at, and by the way, the $87,000, just to remind the board, in the agreement that was signed, it says that if the job runs past 12 months of construction, the town was going to pay $21,000 and change per month. This was an agreement that was signed in 2015, when GHD was originally retained. So I was, this is well before my time. But be that as it may, when the job was going past September, they asked for an additional $87,000. There was some back and forth with the board. We did talk to them about maybe we could share some of the oversight to finish the job, and so they came back with a proposal for $65,000. And the last time it was discussed with the board, this goes back to mid-December, the board asked for some additional backup, and they asked for the town, the prior town attorney to basically confirm some things that were in the agreement about some of these rates. And that was where it was left. And now here we are, where they recently gave me an amended amendment.
Mr. Rodriguez, have you seen the amendments?
No, I haven't, but, and I don't know anything about the request of the previous town attorney, so I'm not sure if that was, anything was ever prepared or submitted to the board. I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, I'd have to update you on all that stuff. I've never brought this to you, so, that has to be done.
I'm happy to look into it and, you know, get back to the board.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we take a short recess? Rest room.
Okay. Do you want to take a five minute?
Yeah, let's take a five.
Motion? We're going to take a five minute break, two, five minutes here?
Yeah, five minutes.
Take a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye, Mike.
Break. Bye. 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 Bye.
Okay, we are returning to the work session meeting on January 28th. The next item on the agenda is the Par Three Golf Course. And we have a slew of staff who are going to be joining us. We have our town engineer who continues to sit here.
He has water this time.
Oh, good, good. Round four. We do have our building inspector, John Landy. We have John Tegger, our town planner, and our park superintendent, Jim Oderano.
And nobody can sit between the blue lines here, okay?
Not my thing.
But, you know, I mean, these are their camera.
Yeah, you'll that.
Look it up from that side for them.
Yeah.
The other one. Different angle.
I do want to just thank all of you. I know it's been a long.
You're over too far.
It's okay, John. You're all right.
Blue line.
Listen, it's been, it's been a long day, I know, but I really do appreciate all of you sticking around and helping us out here.
Didn't you hear earlier? Didn't I see you?
So we're talking about the Par Three Golf Course. I just, yes, a little background. This was the same Par Three Golf Course project that was brought to the work session two weeks ago. Since then, there were some, some questions raised by some constituents. And so we collectively, as a town government, huddled together and we were able to answer some of those questions. And so I want Jimmy, if you can, if you can just provide a quick update as to where we are with the project and what steps we're taking to make sure that the process, a proper process is being followed.
As you know, we sat in front of the planning board yesterday. They had plenty of the paperwork and the plans for the golf course, but there's certainly some things that were missing. They need a stormwater plan. They need a parking plan as well. And they need to prove, they had some of it, but they want a more in-depth tree plan as well.
And this all came from the planning board?
Yes. Correct. We met with the DEC today.
Great.
We haven't done anything that was in violation.
Perfect.
At this point, but we do need to get, there's always a but. We do need to get a New York State DEC permit to go further with our plan.
Okay.
So they're laying out the, the plan on how to get that with the management company, and we're going to do that. And.
And I do want to thank Mr. Quinn for setting that up as quickly as he did.
Correct.
For, that was brought to our attention, I think at the end of last week, and to get DEC down here and taking a look at the site was great.
So that's where we are.
Okay, so we have, we have a process moving forward with the planning board. We have a process moving forward with DEC. I know that there's a, you already issued a building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
They're also getting their electrical, I think, in the next week or so.
Electrical in the next week?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any sense how long the DEC permit's going to take? That seems, just on, you know.
I'll yield to our town engineer.
That seems to be the hurdle, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the big question is whether they have to prepare new plans for the DEC. Based on the conversation we had with the, the person in charge, who met us at the site, they likely will not have to do that. So I think we could do it, you know, much shorter.
Mm-hmm.
I do, I know I'm going to meet with Jim and John Tegger tomorrow, just to make sure that all the environmental steps, the environmental assessments are all in order. So assuming that all checks out, they, they should be able to apply for and receive the permit relatively quickly, in a matter of weeks versus, you know, months or something like that.
Good. And I know that we had met with the principals on Monday. We met with them on Monday. I know that they, there is a timeframe that we're trying to work in to make sure that we don't necessarily delay their project, you know, to a certain extent. So this is one of those things that we're working together on collectively. And I do really want to just thank you all for, you know, as Councilman Patel said earlier, rolling up our sleeves and, and just getting this on the right course and through the right process, just to make sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Any questions from the board about this project in general or the process that they're being put through now?
So, Michael, I was at the planning board meeting yesterday. I know that part of it.
It seemed, sorry. It seems that a big part of this is that we, the process wasn't followed through. I had asked a question about engineering and I was told that I, that they did not think you had looked at the plans. Have you gotten a chance to look at the engineering on this yet?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not sure that there are plans. I, I mean, I think the projects, there's been a lot of iterations of this project. And when we actually went out into the field and asked the guys that are working there, what are the, what are the plans you guys are working with right now? And they have what I call sketches from the golf company. It's Arnold Palmer, I believe. So those folks, I guess, gave them like some guidelines on what to do or what areas to, to dig up. And so there's like dirt piles throughout the site. And one dirt pile is where the grass was taken up, and then one dirt pile is like the topsoil that was underneath there. So those are, you know, materials that they want to reuse within the site.
Yep.
And they've always had erosion controls in place. The inspector from the DEC brought up a couple of concerns. We'll have our, we have two certified erosion inspectors that work in engineering. So we'll have them go out and just, you know, fix a few things.
Yeah, that was a big question on Monday.
To kind of help them through it. So, but as far as like an engineered plan, I think that's what they're lacking. And I, I think in order to prepare an application for a permit, because we talked to the, to the owners or the developer, if you will, they have to, you know, identify a responsible professional, like someone that's going to take charge here. And I don't think the town, you know, needs that liability or should take that on.
Talk about oversight.
Yeah, based on everything I understand, they need to do this. And we'll help them, but we don't actually want that responsibility. That, that's rightfully with them. And so they have a couple of people that have been engaged, and I guess they got to now like get them, you know, formally designated as a responsible person that's going to sign off on these applications to the DEC. So that was just one little sticky issue that, that they're trying to work through.
And I know that there were some, there were some paperwork questions when we met on Monday. Have we resolved those paperwork questions? I know that there was questions coming out of your department about, did we, were able to resolve any of that? I know we had questions about amended agreements. Have we been able to resolve any of those questions?
I did have some of the paperwork that Mike and John were looking for from the Board of Health. We had all that paperwork from the beginning of when we obtained, made them obtain building permits. But as you know, we cannot find the latest file.
So we still haven't tracked it down?
Okay.
And have we, have we found the agreement, the amended agreement? Is there a signed copy of that someplace that we've been able to track down?
At this point, I don't have that, that copy. I do have the original amended agreement.
I have the amended. I have, I'm sorry, I have the original. I don't have the amended.
At least a signed copy.
A signed copy of the amended. I have, I'm looking at a, I'm looking at the amended agreement.
You have the amended, just not the signed copy.
I don't have a signed copy of it. Okay, so we need to track that down. Do.
I was going to say, just one thing on the paperwork. I mean, so we did review the files. I'm making copies and scanning everything in for everybody here. But they do have all their, their paperwork in order as far as the Health Department for all the seats they have in that restaurant. So, I mean, it's still a valid approval. There was a question about where they need to connect the town sewer. And I think that's an interest of theirs, but certainly not something they need to do tomorrow.
Okay.
So we kind of put that on like a secondary.
Their septic's up to date, and there's no issues there from the county?
Right. They would love to be on town sewer.
I'm sure they would love to be on town sewer.
And we talked about a few options, but I think initially they'll be on their septic. And they have all those approvals in place.
Right. And so are we, are we talking more, that's a long-term.
A long-term goal.
Solution or goal for us to put them on sewer eventually?
Right. That would enable them to maybe have a larger restaurant or other options.
Where's the sewer in regard to where the restaurant is, Mike? I forget.
It's.
That run through the.
You have several options.
Yeah.
So the.
Crosswood Street.
I thought it ran through, there's also one, I believe, from the old pump station that was there many years ago.
So Wildwood Street is the one, if you.
Right.
There's a residential area in Wildwood. So there is a manhole. In order to get there, it's 1,000 feet away, and there's two stream crossings.
Right.
It's not impossible, but it's not the easiest thing in the world.
Right.
Obviously, they go under Route 6, or they could go all the way to Lee Boulevard. However, there's two private property crossings to do it that way. So, you know, there's, there's issues. But again, I think those are long-term, you know, we don't have to put that on our, our track right now to get those guys.
Yeah, right. Let's, we just got to get them through.
Just curious.
With DEP and the planning board. I think you're, so you're set. Building's set for now.
They do have a permit.
They do have a permit in place.
Any inspections performed?
All the inspections.
Okay. So they're, so you're taken care of. They're going through your process, and you're working with them to get them through.
With the DEC, correct.
DEC. You know, I, I mean, at the end of the day, I think we all agree it's going to be a great project for the town and a great thing for the town. I mean, I remember growing up playing golf there, so obviously good. We just got to make sure they're getting through that process properly.
Correct. And a worst-case scenario, that first hole is seated and ready to go. It's.
We talked about that. They were saying a driving range.
So they could perform some recreation programs through a driving range.
Good.
Driving lessons, things of that nature, to open up, to qualify to open up the restaurant. So with, with their building inspection being done and everything done, being done with the building, and being able to add the recreation aspect of the driving range, it should be able to make the restaurant operational. Obviously, they would have to get the parking plan and other things of that nature.
Yeah, I was going to say the parking, the site plan needs to be done for sale.
Absolutely.
Unless that gets pushed through.
I don't have any comments, other than I, you know, I've seen it briefly. I don't have too much paperwork yet. We're going to start working on that tomorrow.
Great.
Get them in, you know, applications and official process moving. You know, the time is going to be difficult to me, I think. You know, there's a lot of questions.
I know, I know.
We had around the table. Sometimes difficult to answer those in a day and so on and so forth. And so just got to have to keep that in mind and keep the expectations realistic.
But the fact that we've got, I've got, you know, we have four department heads right now at a table, I think speaks volumes. I think it shows that, you know, we're, we're willing to, like, going back to what Councilman Patel said earlier.
Rolling up our sleeves.
And, and we realize the potential of this project. You know, we're looking forward to teeing off on that first hole, but we got to make sure that, you know, a process is followed.
I have a question. What is the name or spelling of the company, you know, the managing it or management company?
RC Recreation Development.
Okay, all right. They are the, they rent from the.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Just one, one question I have. It seems like there was just a culmination of things that weren't followed. Is there any reason that this wasn't done right from day one? I mean, we're moving forward as we go now, but, you know, what was the lack of process?
Well, I would just say that, I mean, I, you know, my couple of years here, this is a town-owned land with a, with a private-public partnership. I, I think it's a little bit confusing for, for staff. I mean, just what the steps were going to be taken. When, when someone, I think Jim, like circulated the agreements, I don't think it was super clear, because I don't, I mean, just, they're standard agreements about who was doing what and who was responsible. I think there was an expectation on their side that the town either didn't, didn't care or, or wasn't required on their part. You know, they didn't ask enough questions, perhaps, but I just think that, that's kind of how it evolved.
Okay.
Just laying out the responsibilities. It wasn't done.
Who was their contact with the town as an entity? So the, the ownership, who were they?
I mean, let me take that question on as well. I mean, we had Rocco, who we all know.
Passed away.
Who was running the lead with this project.
Yeah.
Through the commission. And, and he got it pretty far, and then unfortunately got cancer and then passed away.
Yeah.
Then the same ownership group kind of came in and then re-signed in, in May, I believe, 2018. And Larry Nussbaum, who's a financier.
Right.
And that company had kind of taken the ball and started to run with it. So they were trying to gain information that, all the things that Rocco already did, and it was piecemealed. I mean, they didn't have access to all of his files, I mean, nor do they have someone transfer that information directly to them. It's not like he moved to Florida.
Yeah.
He passed away.
Right.
So a lot of these steps had been taken, so we think, but there's no way to really know where Rocco left that off. So, and, and that allowed some of the confusion.
That's why I was asking who the point person was that they were communicating with. So was it someone in the commission? Because someone should have known where they were, if, if that's where they were dealing with.
So, can I ask you, why they didn't come to you before? I mean, they're going to be, everything would have been ready, you know? What was the reason?
I, I, I don't know why.
Can I take this on again? You know, I think that we had another big project going on. I don't know if you remember Granite Knolls was created.
Granite what?
Exactly. So the superintendent prior to me was more, more focused on that project than per se this project. Now that Granite Knolls is a gorgeous entity and it's a grade-A park, now it's on me to help facilitate this park. So, you know, I, I'm going the right way.
And Jim, Jim, no, I'm, I'm just trying to find out where the breakdown was, so we could avoid this. And so, so when I, when I, in the future, so when I ask about it, you know, I'm not blaming you guys. I'm not, not saying, hey, Jim, you screwed up. I'm saying, hey, where, where did this occur? What can we do to rectify it? Where did the process collapse? Because if we want to keep rebuilding process, you have to know what point you're, you're jumping off at.
Sometimes simple referrals get everyone involved, and believe it or not, it spurs a discussion, and there may have been a discussion early on, had that happened, as to, well, who does this belong to? You know, what would be the process for this, which may, there may not have been. I don't know, I wasn't involved. But sometimes, you know, just a simple referral around to any department head or department that is in any way involved can head off some of these things. An initial meeting with everybody, just as an informative meeting, may spur that discussion, and it may have taken a different path.
Not some.
I don't know why it didn't happen. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not laying blame.
Right, it is what it is.
Or anything.
But the original land was donated by some, you know, somebody? And then there wasn't any, any conditions of not doing something? Because the building was already there and park was there, right?
Well, the original shallow creek was there. And then they went out of, they went out of business, or they, whatever it is, they closed. And they've been closed for a number of years, correct?
I believe we bought it for a dollar.
And then they, and town purchased it for a dollar. Right.
That's, that's.
But we never developed on it.
No, but I, I know the history. You know, I know very well the history. It's just that it was donated to the town, whatever, dollar or penny.
Right, right.
And then was there any kind of a condition put by the, the donor that you cannot sell or do something? Because.
I don't know what the deed says.
I leave you with the park name.
Yeah.
I would imagine, yeah.
It was conceived as flood attenuation.
Yeah.
That's one of its biggest functions. It's why it's only useful as a recreation, to whatever extent it can be used. And that's why essentially that golf course is there, because you can still have the flood attenuation in that whole basin there, but still use it to some degree. And they made a profit for a while, but eventually they couldn't any longer.
Right.
Because there was issue with the hundred-year flood, something.
There's a number of issues. In the, in the 90s, the owner put forth a proposal to develop it as retail. And they did an EIS and so on and so forth, but it fell in on itself because of the flood and wetlands issues.
The last question I have for you, Jim. We also said that we were looking for a resolution passed by the board waiving fees related to the project. Have we found that resolution?
There's no such resolution that I found.
Okay. Great. And to answer your point, your question earlier, every Friday, the big three, I call them, we get together and we talk about projects that are coming across the plate to make sure that everyone knows what's coming down the pipe, and if there's things that are coming at us, everyone understands what to be ready for. So hopefully things like this don't happen, and we don't slip through the cracks. And, you know, we brought in Jim on these meetings. We brought in Superintendent Paganelli on these meetings already. I mean, it's just, you know, communication and just making sure everyone knows. And you're breaking down those silos internally here to make sure that everyone's working on the same sheet of music.
And some time ago, we passed a resolution on that FAST Committee, or whatever it was decided to be called at that point. Has that been working, not working?
Not since I've been in office, but again, that FAST Committee, I think, has taken a different form in, every, every Friday, I sit with, I sit with our building inspector, our town planner, and our town engineer, and we just rip through for an hour, what are the projects that we're working on? What are the projects that have been brought to your office, just to make sure everyone knows, you know, what to be on the lookout for? And then if there are issues that we need to go and have a separate planning meeting for, then we do that. We've done that already three or four times together.
I think this came out in one of those meetings, and that's how we.
It did too.
And that's how we fast tracked it.
That was one of the, yeah, that was one of them. But, you know, it was raised by, by a resident, and we, we brought, you know, we had all three of us together that Friday, and I said, here's the project. What's the situation? And I got debriefed by, by all three, and Jim was there as well. And, you know, that was, I think that was last Friday, actually. I think that was this past Friday. So from this past Friday to Tuesday, we've already set a process up. They've been in front of the planning board. They've had a meeting with DEC, and we have a process moving forward. I don't think you can get any more efficient and effective than that.
No. The FAST, the FAST.
How much faster do you want me to move? I mean, I'm happy to try.
Should have been done Monday. But anyway, the FAST Committee was also done for this purpose, for people to, even residents, if they need to do, you know, they want to put an addition on their house.
Right.
They come and they sit down with the powers-to-be and say, okay, I want to do this. And if it's, no, you can't do it this way, but maybe you can do it that way, is to give them an idea. Maybe if we would have had that in place, or these guys would have gone forward.
But again, I think, I think in the case, what, what the model we're using right now, if someone did want to have a conversation, you know, we would basically take the application, circulated amongst the four of us.
Mm-hmm.
Put a process together for them to follow, and then if another meeting is needed.
Perfect.
We can walk them through and hold their hand through that entire process. That's the idea.
This way we're not.
Which is, I think it's the same thing you're talking about.
Yep.
Just not as formal.
Right. This way it's not sending them out to fetch a wicked witch's broom all the time.
Right, yeah. No need for people going back four or five times.
But when I say something, you know, we are ready to help.
Right.
But those are coming with the piecemeal, you know?
Yeah, right.
Then they will blame us.
Absolutely.
Make sure.
It's also important to know what, you know, what our boards and departments. It's also important to know what, you know, what our boards and departments are gonna be working for.
No, because this, you know, this is a many-time problem. They don't wanna give, whatever the reason they don't wanna give, maybe they can add it a little more.
The unfortunate part about this is we're involved with the piecemeal stuff, through the commission and through the process.
You mean for this specific example?
Specific examples, so.
Because this was ten years, ten years ago, there was some proposal.
Got a solution on the table. I wanna thank everyone, all of you for being here so late. I know it's, you know.
Thank you for your leadership on this as well.
Now, listen, it's a team, we're doing this together. Mike, go rest up, go rest up, Mike. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Tanker.
Do you have a watch? You know what time it is? I think we should have one clock.
What'd you call him, John?
I don't know my watch.
Oh.
Next on the agenda, we're talking once again, continuing.
Better move over.
Battery storage.
You don't yell at me.
Don't forget the mic, John. I hear, I hear Tom in the back. He got a mic right there. So, in your packets is a, and I know John also emailed a updated draft of the battery storage. It's a redline draft for us to go through again. You wanna provide a little background? Or you want me to try to give a little background, whichever you prefer?
Can I ask you? Can you just say first what was the major changes? Then it will be more faster, you know?
It's actually pretty, they're simple.
They're pretty simple and straightforward changes. It's some of the ideas, but not all, that we talked about the last time I was here. You'll find it in Section J, under special use permit standards, which I think is on page nine or 10. I don't have, this does not have.
It doesn't have page numbers on it, yeah.
The, the, how many is about?
That's good.
I think about 20 pages, right?
There, yeah, it's right here.
All right. So, I'm gonna skip number one first. I'm just gonna go to two, three, and five, because they're more simple and straightforward, and I think there'll be less discussion about them.
Just for the, for the, for the public, we're talking specifically about special use permit standards, Section J.
So, number two is setbacks. And what I've added is, it said, requirements of the underlying zoning district for principal structures. And I've added, provide adequate screening, provided that adequate screening can be accomplished within the allotted setback. The planning board may determine that the setback be increased to accommodate such required screening. So, in other words, if you're on a, whatever particular property you're on, and the side yard setback is, say, 20 feet, if you can't adequately screen it, the planning board has the option to make sure that you're using, you've moved that installation in to provide the necessary screening. The second one is three. It's height, and it says, tier-three battery storage, energy storage system shall not exceed 20 feet in height, unless part of a larger structure housing a main use as allowed in the underlying zoning district. It originally said comply with the underlying zone, which most of our zones are 35 feet. Three-story, yeah. So, I don't think we need to have battery storage that's 35 feet.
No.
So, the, and I know.
20 feet is, I think, generous.
You and I had a conversation with some folks about the Tesla battery storage.
Yeah.
Over by Staples. Now that every time I drive by there, I'm looking at it. What is, do we know the height over there? It's, because we were both surprised that it really isn't that big.
About six or seven feet tall, that's all.
No, not, I don't think so.
It's probably six, seven or so. It's between six and eight.
In total height?
In total height. And it is maybe 12 to 15 feet long. It is about 1,800 kilowatts. So, but that is a tier-three by a factor of.
And that's what we're talking specifically about here, though, are tier-three systems.
Tier-three system starts at 600 kilowatt-hours or above. So, that is definitely a tier-three, and it is quite minor in nature. And, you know, by its size lends itself to be manipulated in a way that you can hide it, screen it, keep it away, and it's relatively unobtrusive. By comparison, the one that we saw at Gomer is four units of, that are about 13 feet wide by 55 feet long and 13 feet high, four of them.
I'm sorry, say it again. Give me the dimensions one more time. 14 feet wide?
About 12 to 14 feet wide.
Yep.
By 55 feet long, by 13 feet high.
Wow.
Four of them, with some other ancillary equipment nearby. So, it's like a box trailer. Right. Now, that is rated 5,000 kilowatts, and it pushes 15,000 kilowatt-hours of energy.
And there's four of them?
Four of them. And the total is 15.
Total, that's the total, okay.
So, that is, you know, far and above, well into being a tier-three, obviously, since the threshold is 600 kilowatt-hours. The point of that one is that it is situated, or proposed to be situated on about two-and-a-half-acre piece of property. It is in a commercial zone. It's up on Gomer Court, not Gomer, Gomer Street, which is near Route 6N, on the north side of Route 6. It abuts Route 6. I think that it is telling in that the actual neighborhood is, does not read quite like an intense commercial area. It has some houses in it. It's a little bit mixed, and it's very low-scale, all the way up till Hill Street. So, I think it is something to look at in terms of what should be screened and how that would visually affect the surrounding area and whether or not it can be screened. So, when they were in front of the planning board, the planning board asked them to take some strides towards screening. They did. They did some visual analysis. I don't think it was necessarily adequate at this point, but this law, I think, would push them to do a better job.
Okay.
You can imagine, four semi-tractor trailer.
Right.
Containers.
Containers, sitting on a piece of property, would definitely have a negative impact in any zone. So, I think they need to be screened. In a commercial zone, I think, maybe not fully screened, but at least buffered or diminished in a certain way.
And the concern that we heard the most was tier-three equipment in residential zones.
Right.
That's what we heard the most concern about.
Correct. Now, you have to keep in mind that you have Tesla, which is maybe six to eight feet high and 12 to 15 feet long, very unobtrusive, easy to screen.
Yeah.
It's, you know, takes up a couple of parking spaces, and then it can go all the way up to one such as this size. So, I think from that, I think you can understand that even if they are in residential zones, depending on the size and intensity, they should be able to be managed. Obviously, the larger the property, the more of these, the larger intensity you may actually get.
Right.
I think that's why special permit is appropriate, and the planning board can decide whether or not it's too intense, whether it can or cannot be screened, and either approve it or not approve it based on those determinations. And it leads me to number five, which is entitled screening and visibility. And what I've added, I'm gonna just read the whole paragraph, which says, "Tier-three battery energy storage systems shall be fully screened from adjacent residential properties, streets or roads on which it fronts or is visible from, and any other views in which the planning board determines is necessary. Views from adjacent commercial properties shall be minimized from, minimized to the extent reasonably practicable. Screening and buffering may be accomplished using architectural features, earthberms, landscaping, or other screening methods that will harmonize with the character of the property and the surrounding area and not interfering with ventilation or exhaust ports." So, in that, it strengthens the requirement to be fully screened in the residential areas. In commercial areas, such as if you use Tesla as an example, it doesn't need to be.
Right.
Fully screened. You don't have to go to that length. But certainly, you need to look at it, whether it needs to be buffered, softened, you know, hidden a little bit from one particular view and not necessarily the other. It's a little bit different, so.
John, this is the, very near, this particular item is, is that very near that ball, ball field or something on the 66N, you know? It was a commercial, you know?
A ball field on Route 6N?
Is it near?
Is it near? He's asking, is it Navajo?
Navajo, yeah.
It's near Navajo. This one you cannot see from Navajo.
Oh, okay. So, you're just saying, is there any wetland or anything there?
There's wetlands on and adjacent to this site.
Yeah.
And it is near and partially in the buffer.
Yeah.
Needs a wetland permit, yeah. Okay, so then I wanna move back to number one, which I added completely. And I think we had a lot of discussion on this last time. And it says, it's entitled lot size. And it says, "Tier-three battery storage systems shall be located on lots with a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet." Now, that's about three-quarters of an acre. Obviously, the first comment is that you can determine, that's, you can plop in any size here that you wish. If you, if you make it, I know that we had talked about, someone brought out a two-acre minimum. If you do a two-acre minimum, then the installation at Tesla becomes, you have to think about that one in particular and that type of installation. If you do it at two acres, the Gomer Street is obviously an allowed installation.
Right.
And is fairly intense. I mean, there's four of those containers, if you wanna call them that, producing a lot of electricity. Certainly something good. From that standpoint, it's on partially-developed property, which is good from that standpoint. It's not taking down a lot of trees. It does have some environmental impacts. Whether or not the view sheds to it can be fully screened and managed is yet, I think, a question that probably still needs to be looked at for this particular project. But I think that gives you an idea of the range that it can go from. John, on that property, where would it be positioned? I know you have the building there that was the body shop, et cetera. And they have parking lot on this side where the high-line trucks are. Now, what's, would it be past that, or? Yeah. So, if you imagine Gomer Court, and then they have kind of a long building that fronts on it, and the parking lot is a little to the side and behind it. Right. The, the units are installed behind the building. Okay. Fairly, you know, in adequate distance away and somewhat parallel, but not exact. Mm-hmm. Closer to Route 6, in other words. Well, they're closer to the back of the property. They, they are lined up perpendicular to Route 6. Okay. And they are essentially parallel to Gomer Court. Gomer Court, okay, okay.
How many feet from the Gomer Street? Is that near also?
Gomer, Gomer Street is on the other side of Route 6.
Oh, okay, the court, yeah.
These are, I think these are good amendments for us to consider. When you talk three-quarters of an acre, I'm still trying to get a sense as to, I don't even know if this is a fair question, but from an inventory standpoint in the town, how much are we looking at? You know what I'm trying to say? Like, how many options is that gonna give somebody to put a tier-three system?
That's hard to answer. Not a heck of a lot.
Okay.
But certainly, there will be a number of properties that, that you can.
Right.
There will be properties that are well in excess of that, obviously. Will you find parcels that are about three-quarters of an acre that are nestled in half-acre subdivisions? Few, but really not too many. I can do, I can try to do a quick inventory, if you like, so you have an understanding.
My thing is what we're trying to do, though. We're trying to protect the integrity of our residential communities.
Right, of course.
And that's, and that's the intent of these amendments, is to protect those, like you said, the half-acre lots, the, you know, the neighborhood feel, because, and I understand it. People don't want, or not that they don't want, but they are very concerned about having something the size of the Gomer property pop up right next to them, so.
And you couldn't do that on a three-quarter acre.
Right.
I think, they could try, but by the time you attempt to screen it and so forth, I don't think you could really reasonably do it on three-quarters of an acre. I don't think it would work.
Currently, we have a moratorium now in place on battery storage. What would the process, proposed process be? To lift the moratorium and pass an amended, or pass a battery storage law? Could we do them simultaneously?
I think you can do them in the same night. I think you would pass this, and then after that, you would pass a resolution to lift the moratorium. Does that sound?
Yeah, you could do it the same night, basically, actually.
Okay.
John, I'm sorry, could you just point out on the, where it would be on that overhead satellite?
It's down in here.
Okay, so that whole back area there?
Whole back area.
Where is it?
It is kind of along this way. So, it's not exactly parallel, but it's traveling this way, end to end, so to speak.
I got you.
I have the, I have the plan, if you wanna open it up.
No, I just, I needed to get a visual.
No, no, I agree. The visuals help.
Oh, so it's towards the west, west portion of the property? Yes. Okay, okay.
But again, we're not here specifically for that one project.
Right, 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 right.
We're looking at legislation that affects everything. And again, with what we're seeing, making sure that we have the safeguards in place to protect our residential neighborhoods. And, but also the flexibility that allows the town to benefit from battery storage. I mean, there are communities across the Hudson Valley that are, that are getting some pretty significant revenue from battery storage facilities in the appropriate places.
Right.
And I think that's the key that we're trying, that's the balance we're trying to meet here.
Right. Well, you know, the, the future of solar for houses is.
Battery storage. I agree. That's the next thing. Yeah, they're gonna replace your generators. You're not gonna need generators anymore, because you have battery storage. Councilman Patel, do you have any questions about the legislation?
No, I'm just following in, you know, only the AC battery with the commercial, you know, the laid AC. The commercial, they know how to do, control their safety and all that, so it seems to be okay, you know? And I don't know how will go on, like you buy a house, you know, and you have your battery. What will happen to the next person if he doesn't want it? Or he's not continued to, he has to continue to whatever the remaining, the balance of your payment and the cost and all that?
I don't know the specifics. I would imagine it's similar to your solar panels.
Yeah.
Is my guess.
Yeah, if you have a lease on your solar panels.
Or you own. It all depends on, on your financing of that.
Well, I mean, you know, it's a new kind of a way of doing things. So, new owner.
Yeah, but, but you know what? That's, that's all in the negotiation when you buy a place.
Yeah.
You know, some people want a house with solar, some people don't. And if, if that's, if that's enough to turn them off.
No, it's really good thing to do solar.
Yeah, I got it on my house.
You would go in a blue day, and you, every city, you'd see the, right from the boat, you know? All solar, and here, Germany.
Absolutely.
Oh, it's good.
Now, we had that conversation, Germany, France, all along the highways.
Yeah. I think, I think, like I said, I think these are very good amendments, something for the board to consider.
Yeah.
And we can have a conversation about if we're comfortable enough, you know, moving this, and as well as the moratorium, moving both to the next steps in the process.
I really think we need to, Matt, because, you know what? Progress is catching up with us, and as long as we're protecting our residential neighborhoods, and I think the three-quarter acre does help in that, especially when you talk in the term of neighborhoods.
Right, John.
Because your neighborhoods in New York Town are usually, well, the old ones are quarter acre. Then they did the half-acre zoning. Usually, the bigger houses that are on the acre-plus, two acres are not in a little neighborhood.
Well, that's exactly what John said, yeah.
Right. And you could have that hiding, so I think we, I think we need to address it, not put, not kick it down the road.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would say, well, that's why we continue to work on it, yeah.
It's also important to the electrical grid infrastructure. I think this is the way things are going, and this mitigates a lot of the demand issues and the aging infrastructure. I think that's why they're doing it and pushing it in the way that they're doing it.
Right.
Which is, and it's important for the commercial zones, as well as the residential zoning districts, to have some of that infrastructure, I believe. Just as you have electrical substations and telephone switching stations, as I, as I mentioned last time.
And a reliable source of store energy.
And, exactly.
You have it when you need it. You have it when you need it.
It just makes, it makes a lot of, I know, like, listen, the concept of battery storage just makes a ton of sense, which, you know, I think we all recognize. It's just making sure that we're taking our time and, and doing our due diligence to protect our neighborhoods, to make sure that, that there's that balance and protection there, and we're safeguarding.
I think, once we look over this whole law and, and digest it, and have the hearing on it, then.
So do we, do we want to, do we want to give it to?
Yeah, I think we should move for referral.
I'd give it to.
Okay.
Because it'll help us to get, to get some of those ideas.
Okay.
Yeah, let people speak to that, you know, because most of the people who favor it, favor it.
That's great.
And we get our comments back on that.
John, thanks. It's great. So Diane, if we can refer this out?
So moved.
Motion, refer out the.
I just moved it.
Oh, you did? Second.
Give it a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we're going to refer this. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, great work.
Thanks.
Looking forward to the feedback on that. And again, thank you for being here.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
See you bright and early tomorrow.
Great. 7:30 breakfast?
All right, next on the agenda, George Souls, Bob Giordano, and Sergio Esposito coming to talk about a hotel RFI. Gentlemen, please join us. I guess, not by the blue. That's all I can tell you.
He didn't have a spot here. He didn't come here.
Okay. It's really not bad. All right.
Let me begin. George Souls, 51-year resident, chairman of the Yorktown Economic and Business Revitalization Committee. And this is a fun discussion, after some of the, the heavy-duty subjects that you've covered.
He's going to yell at you.
I think this will be something that everybody can identify with and have some fun. We thank you again, as a committee. You approved the formation of, of our committee, and you passed an approval for the hotel, the creation of a hotel in town, which will eventually be, come to being with an RFI. Let me talk about some of the, the things that are going to be involved in this, and then I'm going to ask Bob Giordano, who's put together a very, very concise summary of where we've been, starting with January of last year. We're going to be involving all of the Yorktown departments that you saw here. Obviously, a hotel comes in, they're going to be putting in specifications on what a building would look like, so architecture would be involved, building, planning. John, John still here?
He's trying to leave.
Probably talking to you tomorrow on, on some of the things, John.
He's trying to leave.
I have a morning meeting, Matt.
But who is going to make the initial contact is one question. We can put together, from a marketing viewpoint and a sales viewpoint, that this is a very exciting concept for the town of Yorktown. As an example, Peekskill put in a Holiday Express about three years ago. I'm told that the occupancy rate on that has been either at 100% or close to 100% pretty much every month they've been in operation. I think we can do no less. There are no hotels within 15 miles of Yorktown that have the class and qualifications that we're looking at in terms of the specifications we put here. We're not going to go for a Ritz-Carlton-type hotel. Deluxe is not going to be considered, but I've already made some contacts with the hotels, at least on the, on the web system, and there are two chains under a large hotel chain beginning with M. There are three chains under a large hotel system beginning with C, and then I mentioned the Holiday Inn. That chain would be used. I'm only not using the names because I don't want to say that we're going to be using them. It's possible that that would be the, the quotation going out to those folks. We're looking at a hotel that would be perhaps 50 to 100 rooms. We're not sure about whether it has a pool. Tom, would that be something you'd vote for?
A pool? No, it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to you, okay? Two main conference rooms, and indoor and outdoor is always the question that comes up next. Two main conference rooms, a real-time reservation system whereby someone makes, for instance, our friends at Research, Vishnu, they want to make a reservation, someone's coming in from India or from, from Europe, there should be a real-time reservation system that they know before they get on a plane or even get management approval for the trip, they've got a place to stay. And then, the latest network capability. We also would like the hotel chain to talk about green. Will they be looking at their latest designs that would include solar energy or some kind of green technology? So those are the things that we, we are going to put into a document, Matt, that we'll give you in terms of, these are the so-called needs that a chain would have to meet.
Right.
In order to meet the needs of Yorktown.
So, just before Mr. Giordano presents, I mean, I think, I think it's important to understand, obviously, you know, people have been wanting, and Mr. Giordano's been really spearheading this for a number of years now, bringing the hotel to Yorktown. This is a, an exploratory measure that the town would be taking to solicit information, putting out something similar to what you're discussing, a document with, with specifics on it of what we're looking for, and seeing what we get back. And, and that gives us the opportunity to, to weigh our options and, and see what perspective hotel chains are out there who would be interested in Yorktown, and also to make sure, see, from a demographic standpoint, what our town looks like, you know, in regards to, in regards to their demographic studies. And I think it's an important step for us to take, and it's, I know it's something that your, your, your organization and your committee has been champion, been champion of, and so that's why we felt it was important to put it on the work session agenda to see
if we can, what the next steps would be for something like this, so. I'm going to ask Bob to take over.
Yeah, let's have Mr. Giordano.
And then I'll, I'll have a couple of remarks at the end.
So, just for the record, this is a copy of the presentation we made in February of last year. Following that presentation, there were six recommendations. I think you accepted all of them. So, our, our attempt to get rolling with the RFI, which you basically approved and, and were, were behind, got, got sort of short-changed, and I think the previous administration latched on to some properties with some investors, and they, you know, looked at several sites, and the deal just didn't go through. We had recommended that a parallel path be followed, that is, that we, we identified a number of properties, a number of hotel chains, a number of property owners, and the previous administration basically was, was keyed into this one developer and these two properties. Now that we've confirmed that those deals are not going forward, we really need to do the RFI just to get a handle on, and I don't think it's the hotel chains we're going to be reaching out to necessarily. I think the key is the, the property owners, investors, and developers, and that can be done fairly easily and quickly. It could be as simple as inviting them here to speak to you. I think John knows the properties that have been kicked around. Some of them may be zoned, where it's a permitted use, others may require rezoning. But I applaud you for what appears to be your quick start and your, you know, your, your program to get your department heads here right then and there, and I, I think if you bring in some of these property owners and say, "We want a hotel in town," would you be interested in pursuing that? Because if you did, we would like to work with you to get it, you know, moving quickly. So.
Come on, Matt.
So, I'll, I'll hand out the drivers that we used at the presentation, just to refresh your memories.
Got you.
You got it. Got it. All right. I, I got one for you, Serge, too.
Thank you.
So, and we don't have to go over them in, in detail, but the needs assessment, desirability, plenty of hotels and catering facility, I mean, restaurants and catering facilities have expressed an interest. IBM has been mentioned more than one occasion, the, the hundreds of people they bring in during the summer, and they're sending people to.
Tarrytown.
Tarrytown and White Plains. The Shrub Oak School has inquired to, I know, to the chamber, as well as to me and to the previous supervisor, on numerous occasions, as they ramp up.
Yeah.
They're, 75% of their students, which the student population could be 400 to 500, will have families visiting.
Right.
To tell their families to go to White Plains or go to Danbury. The need, the, the need is there, and a chain, he said M, I'll say it's Marriott. Marriott has expressed an interest in Val Santucci's development, proposed development across from the Hudson Valley Hotel. And that's proposed to be a Marriott, 100-room Marriott, okay? It's hit some snags because the public there was not fully appraised of the two developments on, on the 30 or 40 acres.
He won't go home, so I'm going to, John.
I can hear you.
I know, but I have questions. I'm going to, I'm going to, unfortunately, Councilwoman Roker is, is ill, and we wish her, and we wish her well. But I'm going to play Alice tonight, Councilwoman Roker. John, come on up.
You guys sit right here, the new chair, John.
Okay, so.
Have you, have you been, have they come to the, to the, to your department or the planning board in regards to what Mr. Giordano's saying?
Has who come?
Marriott, or anyone related?
No.
Nothing, okay.
Okay, so.
Excuse me, Bob, I don't mean to interrupt. Where was the, where was the, the property, Val Santucci's property?
Okay, so there's, there's two parcels, I think, together, they're around 40 acres, directly across Hudson Valley Hospital.
Okay.
Okay, that, that whole strip there. So it's a combination of.
Is that across from Hudson Valley Hospital? That's Cortland.
You're right. No, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm mentioning that, that, yes, yes.
202.
Yes, but I'm, I'm mentioning that because, because Marriott has seen a need to get in the market here, okay?
In this area.
In, in the area, in general.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. All right, and, and I am told, the previous administration, in their speaking with a property owner on Route Six and one on 202, and an investor had done research, and Marriott also expressed an interest in being in, near the Teconic on the 202 Route Six corridor. Now, whether they would want to be, have one in Cortland and one in Yorktown, I'm not, I'm not speaking to that, okay? It's, I, I think they just want to get here, and, and, and that's all the more reason to move expeditiously. So, we go to sports tournaments, our new, you know, sports complex is, is bound to bring in large numbers.
Right, you have Graninol's, Navajo Field.
I can go down the list of family weddings, funerals, births, special occasions, so the need is there, okay? And it's been expressed, there's been an interest expressed.
I don't think anyone's ever argued that, at that point. And we've had no, none of the franchises come look at us, and none, no one tried. I know, well, three years ago, someone came in asking questions.
If I could make a couple of comments.
Talking to the mic?
About.
Please, Serge.
Sorry.
Sergio Esposito.
He's usually loud enough, but.
President of the chamber.
Yeah. I mean, this is a fantastic idea, and it would really benefit the town. About 15 years ago, the chamber ran studies, explored all of this kind of stuff, and really, what, what ended up happening was the hotels came back to us with their studies, and they said they needed to be at at least 80% capacity, and they didn't see it about 15 years ago. The fact that a hotel wants to open up down 202 in Cortland tells us that, gives us a sign that, you know, they are interested. And times are different now.
Right.
So, I will tell you that if that hotel opens up on, on 202 down in Cortland, before we open up a hotel here, we're out of luck.
Right, agreed.
So, i- if we're going to do something, you know, now's the time. I do know that on Route Six, right off the Teconic, we're probably talking about the same property, there is an investor that's interested a few years ago. It actually kind of ruffled some feathers, so it kind of got quiet. I know that Villa Barone Manor has a lot of hotel, has a lot of.
Villa Barone is dying for a hotel.
They're dying for a hotel. They actually, from what I understand, they bought a piece of property.
Yeah, no, no, Villa Barone bought a piece of property across the street, their problem is they have no sewers.
Right.
That's their problem. That whole Route Six corridor going into Carmel, Mayapack, they don't have sewers going up there, and so they're desperately, just like, it sounds like we're about to engage in, racing against the clock to get sewers in so they can, they can open up their hotel.
Right, so we need to beat that clock.
So, we've got two clocks that, that we're.
So it's important, but, you know, what I want to stress is, it's, it's, it's a fantastic idea, it would really benefit the town.
No doubt.
But time is of the essence.
Agreed.
If we're going to do something, then we got to move on it.
I want to just ask Mr. Taggert, I've, you've been, you're, you know, you've been here for quite some time. Can you just, from a historical standpoint, in addition to what Sergio said, from the town's perspective, I mean, have we engaged in a process like this before regarding an RFI for a hotel?
We have not done this. We have had some inquiries over the years, you know, going back as far back as 15 years, I think, occasionally. We did meet with somebody a few years, the most recent is a few years ago, from a Holiday Inn people, had some interest. We were connected by one of the managers in the one at Peekskill, and they came in and talked. Nothing has ever gotten, gotten past the talking stage. Several properties that were in consideration for many years is the southwest corner of Route Six and the Teconic Parkway. And the one that is now gone is Lowe's property. However, down the hill, which was just recently.
Yep.
Rezoned.
Yep.
There is that property on the north side of Old Crampon, there's also the property that is between Old Crampon and Route 202, which is also commercial.
In your experience dealing with, you know, participating in those conversations, would something like this be more attract, I'm trying to, you know, be more attractive, put the claim down that Yorktown's serious about this? Would, would an RFI accomplish that, so we can get past just the talking stage, and maybe we can actually?
Yeah, I think in our, the, the appearance of an RFI in their inbox, so to speak, will, will indicate some seriousness.
Okay.
I also think you have to have, and I don't know if they're planning to do so, I'd imagine so, several properties that certainly make sense, and that you could move rather fleetly on to get them.
Respectfully, I, I would, I would request that any properties that are identified, you're having a, a conversation, you're part of that conversation.
Happy to help.
Always happy to help. That's why you're here again until 10 o'clock at night, like we were last night.
So, if I could just chime in, the property that John's talking about, the Lowe's.
The old Mandel, Mandel?
The old, the old Mandalay, right?
Mandalay, that's what it is.
Mandalay. So, Zell, Zell, I spoke to the, the owner, and he has indicated that he had previously expressed an interest to the town, whether that was Michael Grace, or whether that was Lonnie, or whether it was planning, as part of that development, that he would put a hotel in there.
Okay.
Let, let me.
Yeah, so, that was mentioned more in passing than anything?
Okay.
I was advocating for a hotel on that piece to Mr. Zellin.
So, he indicated today that he's interested.
He's interested, but Mr. Zellin's more interested in the.
The housing.
The multifamily, right, so.
Okay.
The other is not, I don't think, the most important aspect of that project to him.
Okay, let me ask you this question, though, and I said this to Bob when we met. What happens if we put an RFI on the street and we get no response? What then?
Rewrite the RFI.
Rewrite, but I, I just.
This has to be done via an RFI.
But I'm just, my concern, and I've said it, and I expressed it to you when we met.
I heard you.
And I, and I just, I think everyone, I think we have to put everything on the table here, is what happens if we put an RFI on the, on the street and we get no response? I just don't want that to be a reflection of the town, and I, and I don't want it to be a reflection on what we're capable of. And so I do have some concern on that aspect.
Well, I, I think, I think a large part of the RFI is not only putting it out, but literally, you know, I would look at all of the, the big chains that are all franchising their minor, minor properties. So Courtyard by Marriott is a franchise. So we need to find the franchise owners in the area that are interested in going in. I personally would find out who the, the direct competition for the Holiday Inn Express is and that's who I would, that's who I would approach and say, you know what? They're taking all the business in the area.
So let's, let's talk about the Holiday Inn Express though. And I only know this anecdotally, I'd like to see some data on it, to be honest with you. One of my concerns with the Holiday Inn Express is they're going to be losing a lot of their clientele because you have Indian Point closing and you have the pipeline completing.
I'm told that a lot of the, their clients are from West Point.
I'm told, I was told...
That's what I was told.
Which may be true, but West Point's getting a new hotel, so they're not going to be over there anymore. And I also, my understanding was during my work in legislature that about, I want to say 20% of their clientele was Indian Point related. And so once you close, once you close Indian Point, you lose that clientele there as well. Now in regards to the Cortland project, you know, they're, they're doing that, it's the MOD.
MOD, Medical Office District.
Right? And so they're, they're like almost tripling down on that at this point.
But it has, it has hit a snag. The, the, the neighboring residential community has now seen the scope and breadth of the 30, 40 acre development and...
Yeah.
It looks, I don't know that it's, 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 it's been zoned for the uses.
Right.
But there, it's been reported that there's great, great opposition, not to the hotel, but to the size of the development.
The enormity of the project. I mean, listen.
You're going to always, you're going to always, you're going to always hit snags like this and, and we're probably going to hit some snags like this as well. I mean, there's always going to be, I mean, three years ago with the property that we're talking about in the northeast corner, there were snags there with the development across the street on Bard, right? So those kind of things, you kind of, you kind of tend to work through. The idea is that, I can tell you, 15 years ago, they found that they were, they were not going to be able to be sustainable in Yorktown because they wouldn't be able to be at 80% capacity.
Right.
Constantly.
Right.
24/7 they had to be at 80%. So if we're going to really, really, really take this seriously, we got to really move on it because we are already a couple of steps behind...
Right.
With the Cortland project.
I got to tell you...
They're already in the phase where people are complaining.
Right.
We haven't even gotten there.
And Sergio, to sort of, you know, to, to zone in on what you're saying, you know, 15 years ago, we didn't have Victoria Z's operating the way they're operating. You didn't have...
Yeah, no.
You didn't have Villa Barone. You didn't have the ballparks.
Listen, there's no, there's no doubt.
Right.
No doubt that a hotel in Yorktown would be tremendous for this community and I, and I'm, I've made it clear, I'll talk to absolutely anybody about this town and I'll sell anybody on this town. I have no problem doing it. Put me in a room with anybody. But, but again, I think we have to make sure that we're clear in the process.
Yep.
That we're, we're clear on who is managing this process. And quite frankly, quite frankly, our planning department, I've been throwing a lot at them these days.
John just takes it in stride.
But there's no, and again, I, I still remain, I don't want to say skeptical, but I do have, I do in the back of my head, if we get no responses, I just don't want that to be a reflection on the town.
I don't think that's, I, I'm, my degree is actually in hotel management. Everything that's been happening and moving is very attractive, especially to one of the smaller groups. You know, you're going to get a major hotel per se? No, you're not going to have that.
I get you.
But for the, you know, for like the 80 to, to 99 room type of complex...
I think that's what we're looking at, right?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, listen, it's a first step too, you know? And then we can always, you know?
If you get IBM to, Vishnu, does IBM have people that handle all of their bookings and travel as people come in the area?
No.
Everyone does their own thing?
But still, we can always have a conversation with them.
There are more people, they leave. See, IBM has a, you know, the educational center.
Right.
It's like a five-star hotel that was only for the IBM. Now they have extra rooms, so they go over there. I was in a meeting with the association down of West City County and there was some, I never been inside that site before where they have renovated, but I've been to their building and this is what they are using it. They have their...
You know, this is no...
I was going to suggest, oh, go ahead.
This is no new idea. This goes back probably 40 years. All right? IBM was going to take over where the mall is. Or not take over, they were going to take that piece of property and they're going to put, they were going to put IBM there. Instead, they moved down to 134 and the board at that time deemed that it was traffic concerns that caused that, that dilemma. With IBM going into that location, we were going to get, and I believe, Tony, you can back me up on this, I believe it was a Holiday Inn that was going to go with that property at the intersection. It would have been the westbound intersection area by where probably most people don't remember where Len's Fish Fry was. It was kind of east of the Getty Gas Station. That was supposed to be the Holiday Inn. When IBM backed out or the board turned them down at that point in time, so did the hotel. Now, yes, from 40 years to today, things have changed. All right? I don't, and I hope, and like, and to, to Matt's point, I'm worried about somebody coming in here and saying no, because if one says no, quite possibly the other ones are going to say no. And yes, we have Victoria Z's, we have the Villa Barone, we have ball teams that might be coming in, but I think it's going to be a hard sell.
John, what do you think?
Regarding the RFI?
Yeah. Is it, is it productive? You missed, you missed 99% of the shots you don't take, so I, I'm not afraid of taking the shot here, but what are your thoughts? As a, you know, this is your bailiwick.
When you say throwing it out there, I don't know...
100%.
Are you going to advertise it, you know, generally out there or are you going to target certain companies? You know, I think, I think if you develop contact in some, several of the hotel companies and directly invite them to look at this, I think you have a, a better shot rather than throwing it out up on the website and throwing it out on some public websites.
Yes.
And not getting any response. I think if you...
Direct, direct solicitation is what you're telling me.
Solicitation with the RFI, provided that it has good information in there on potential properties that we've also done some homework on.
Yes, yes. Hold on, let Bob speak.
So erase, erase RFI, forget it. John would know the three to five properties in town that would be conducive to this. So there's only three to five property owners that you have to reach out to. You can do that in a private meeting, right? You can loop in Marriott who's expressed an interest or you could loop in others, you know, other hotel chains. But it's going to take a property owner first to agree that he wants to have a hotel on his place and that he would develop it or that he would sell the property. So there's only, correct me if I'm wrong, is there more than five?
Well, that's what I'm asking, John. How many, how many properties, how many properties do you, do you potentially see in this town that could host something like this? Off the top of your head?
I can think of about five right now.
Five? Okay.
Done.
Now of those...
There might be a couple more, but I mean, I think...
Of those five, of those five, my guess is they're all privately owned.
Yes.
So even if, to your point, Bob, even if we do an RFI and we say, hey, we got five properties, the property owners...
They could all say no.
They could all say no.
I know of one particular property owner that would probably say yes.
And the Mandalay guy said he was interested. So we know, we know of the five that two are interested.
The question is...
So why do we have to go any further?
The question is sustainability and, and I think, I think that's what needs to be studied first, you know? Now, this, this is going back a few years. Again, we, we looked at all of this and it didn't pan out. The numbers weren't right. And yes, we do have more hotels, more restaurants and stuff like that here, but the question is sustainability. Is there going to be enough for a hotel to have? And, and I think that study has to be had first.
Right, but I think, the study has to be done first, yes, but I think that hopefully we're going to be able to get ourselves on a path where we're going to be able to show that we're going to have the sustainability. I understand the study and I understand the data and that's what it comes down to. There's no doubt about it. But you know, there are other things in the hopper here in town that I think are going to be very exciting and hopefully be a catalyst for people to invest in the community. So I go back to John, do you think it's better to have the private conversations? I, I mean, frankly, I'm fine doing an RFI if we think that is going to be...
Productive.
You know, a flag in the ground saying, we're here, we want, we want, we're, we're serious, we mean business?
I think, I think it would be productive even only for the gathering of information to talk to the property owners and the hotel companies.
We should try to do some comps too, to put in there on what's happening in Mount Kisco and what's happening in Peak Scale on their hotels if we could get that information from them. So the room...
In your opinion, John, who, what department or committee should oversee this process? Because again, I know I'm throwing, John, John's about to tap out on me.
No, no. You know, honestly, I think that these, these guys can do a good job of, you know, doing a lot of the work. And my department can assist and, and provide kind of the official point to it.
Yup.
Which I think that you need as well.
I agree.
But you know, there's a lot of talent and knowledge here amongst these guys and I, and I think that they can help take it pretty far down the road. And then, you know, we can assist and certainly be part of the point team so that the people that we do discuss it with have some sense that the town is, is quite serious about it.
So from the process standpoint, potentially asking, George, your committee, I know you're huddling up tomorrow, maybe not tomorrow, because I know that Councilman Lachman is going to be there and you have other items on your agenda, but maybe next month you can start the process of writing the RFI, submitting it for the planning department for review and input and we can begin the process and hopefully maybe, you know, in four to six weeks, we have an RFI that we might be able to present to the town board for us to consider.
In the meantime, maybe the thing to do would be to gather the property owners in one room and speak with them to see if they would be interested. So we can say we have property A, B, C, D, and E, you know, that you guys can choose from.
I think, I think you start with that.
I think that would be the place to start.
Before you do the RFI, because if they all come back and say we're not interested, what's the purpose of the RFI?
Sergio said there's at least one.
Well, this was, this was a year ago.
But at the same time, I think John, John has pointed out that there could be great value in going through the RFI process. And, and the information that we could get back from it. And in the same time, we could start setting up conversations with those property owners. And if, you know, basically we're going to get to the point where hopefully we're going to have the conversation with the property owners and the RFI being devised. And at the end of the day, if it comes back that the property owners aren't interested, then we just pull the plug on the RFI before it goes out. But if they are interested, at least we're having it devised and vetted and brought to the back to the town board in a, in a fashion that allows us to digest it and make a...
I think it's wise to do it concurrently.
I also think it's of value to speak with the hotel people, the business development managers.
Yeah.
Because they know what their formulas are. They know what they need. They know what their product is. They know where it can fit. They know the properties and the types of properties that they're looking for. You know, obviously the, the feather in our cap is we're on top of the Teconic Parkway. We have some good properties that I think they would love to be on, which could service down 202 and I think two or three miles away from the MOD in Cortland.
Exactly.
Could certainly be serviced.
Right, there's no doubt about it.
By a, a property up near the Teconic in Yorktown and certainly the benefit to the hotel company would be that they would capture other businesses that they may not being down, down 202.
They all want to be near a major highway because there's, there's the traffic where you're just driving and you're saying, you know, I'm going to stop, let's, you know, what's the next hotel?
Right, right, right.
You know, there's no, there's no doubt about it, they're getting 5, 10, 20% of their...
You have AAA coming over to Lowe's, right? Isn't that like, isn't that what's coming in over by Lowe's and the other pad? And, and so you have that...
They're going on the one, on the one of the pad sites.
On one of the pad sites.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Over by Lowe's, one of the pads.
AAA.
AAA and Starbucks. All right, so I, I think we leave it, I think, I think my, my suggestion and Councilman Patel, obviously your input as well, I think you begin devising the RFI. More work for John. More work for John and I. But you and I can have a conversation and Ed, with your background, I, I would really hope that you can really roll up your sleeves here and help us out. But let's get, let's get a list of, of property owners and potential hotel business development directors to have conversations with. And we'll run dual tracks and hopefully in, in, you know, a month and a half or so, we can come together and we may have something special to present to the town board.
Who would be the person to talk to the development managers?
I think, I think, why don't the three of us, why don't you focus on the RFI and we'll, we'll focus on the property owners and development managers? Because this way it comes from an official town capacity.
I, I agree. I think, I think as a volunteer group, we can't really take on as much responsibility as, as everybody would like to.
Right.
And I think it's duly, I think it's, 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 it's better handled in, in staff or, or...
So then that's how we'll move on.
Well, it also has, has a lot more weight.
It does.
Exactly.
It does.
We can't speak.
I was trying to be polite.
I know, I know I'm a little overweight, but...
I was trying to be polite about it, but, all right. Good? Good, good? Councilman Patel?
Great talk.
Good? Yeah, I'm very excited about it. Let's see what, let's see what happens. Why not?
100 million...
Can't hurt. Let's see what we can do. John? I'm sorry, you shouldn't have stayed. All right, it's getting late here. Next on the agenda...
10 million minimal.
Yeah, right. Hold on, while Sergio, I'm just, real quick, we're just going to, while Sergio is up here, just let's, let's do, while you're here.
Sure.
So next on the agenda, I just, this is not the title of the show, but I couldn't think of anything else, other better way of describing it. There is a proposed TV show that we have been discussing for quite some time. Probably, I know, I think this conversation started actually...
It started last year and we almost had it in place and it was going to be a, a show really just...
I just want to make sure that you're a part of this conversation.
Yeah, it was going to be something that we were going to do to utilize and show off all the assets in Yorktown.
Yup.
You know, to bring people here for a hotel, so to speak, you know, and that kind of stuff. So we had an extensive conversation. We have somebody that's going to film the show, Mike Minor, he does these kind of, these typical productions with, with other municipalities as well.
He's already done them in, he's doing them in Cortland, Peak Scale, East Fish Scale, Wappingers, I believe, are the four that I can recall off the top of my head.
I believe so. Tom, are you in there? Can you, are we right on that?
All right. Winter, winter chicken dinner.
The man behind the curtain says it's okay, so we're good. So that, that's really what, what the whole idea and the whole concept of the show is. It's not just going to be something that we're going to go, just go to businesses. You know, one of the things that I, I ran and Alice Roco is, is on board with it. She's actually, you know, if I must, if I can speak for her, she's really excited about it. So the way the show would work is we would go, we'd probably do like two 15-minute segments. And the idea is to do maybe a town asset and a local business.
Or, or an organization.
Of course, an organization, a local, anything that's in Yorktown that, that's an asset, that's why I'm using the word asset. It would be anything. For example, Bryhardt has the farm and he makes his own molasses and stuff like, honey.
Honey, man.
Woo. I mean, he's got like a big operation there, so you know, the time of year when, when I mean, he's got like a big operation there, so, you know, the time of year when, when he's harvesting all of that, maybe we show up there, you know, with a camera and that kind of stuff.
Would this be on a Channel 20? Is that what it is, a local?
Channel 20 is, I think, the cable channel and Channel 33 is, I believe, the government access. They would all be the government access channel.
So this would be on government access. Well, yeah, no, it would be on YouTube and I know Tom, I think, got a crash course in that.
Yeah, the idea was we would put it on YouTube, Facebook. I mean, it wouldn't just be, we would film it in HD. And so, because the government access channels aren't in HD, but nonetheless, we were filming in HD, so this way when we stream it, we put it on the town website. The Chamber absolutely would promote this and share it, you know, and it would be all over the place.
I think Tom still has a dial cell phone. I'm not sure.
And Mike does some good work. Mike Minor, you know, he did, he did one particular, he showed me a whole bunch of samples of some of the stuff that he did. And, and there was one really that caught my eye. It wasn't like the typical, you know, stuff you see on government access, which is what I don't want, right? You know, the idea is to really put, put Yorktown out there. And I think I could read you some of the thoughts that Alice sent me, if you give me a second.
You know, some of the stuff you could even tie in historic.
Yeah.
And not like, you know, in health, like honey, if you, natural honey from the area.
Helps your allergies.
Helps your allergies.
Yeah.
Your immune system.
Yeah.
No, it's one of our home showcase or...
Yeah, like the, you know, you talk about the maple syrup and...
Yeah, and there's some stuff I know, I see Lynn Briggs out there, so we can do some stuff on RW250, right? Some of our historical preservation projects that we've got going on, talk about the history of our town.
That's correct.
And then the, the map, the map of the historic places that we're hopefully going to get.
Right, the sky's the limit. I mean, I was even thinking of, you know, showcasing our agencies, you know, like the police department. That's one of our greatest assets. You know, I'm a big fan of them and I'm always speaking highly of them. And, you know, one of the, one, maybe one of the segments would be to go and showcase that asset, you know, that...
Jerry, you'll give them, you'll give them a drive around, right, for that?
He's already done it for News 12.
I'm serious. I think, I think, you know, stuff like that would be great.
Yeah.
You know, and it originally, it originally began as a Chamber thing, but, you know, it kind of evolved, you know, into, you know, the entire town.
Right. So, so here's, here's the million dollar question.
Right.
How are we paying for it?
So we know what the, the cost of each show is going to be.
Which is?
I believe it's 800 bucks.
Okay.
Alice...
800 bucks per 15 or per 30?
Per 30.
Okay.
That's for the entire, you know, so if we do one a month, we could do one a month and roll it on, on the government access channel and share it like crazy. We could do two a month. It depends on how it, you know, how it, how it snowballs. I think it'll be great. It's not going to be one of those, like, like I said, this typical government access stuff that you see. We're going to make it like more exciting, more upbeat. And Mike's, I'm sorry, Mike's capable of doing that.
Is it possible, I'm sorry, Serge, I don't mean to derail the train. Is it possible to sell advertisement on this or?
I don't, well, that's a question that I posed to our attorney. There are, this is the question, the conundrum that we've been discussing, correct? And if you're selling, because it's going to be on the government access channel...
Well, maybe we cut it out of the government access.
What you could do.
I heard, I heard the cost. Who's paying for the cost?
That's what we're, that's, that's the discussion is how do we, how do we do it in a way that allows us to put it on the, on the government access channel?
I know that, I know that one of the ideas was that the town would pay half and the Chamber would pay half. Another idea was that the town would cover it. Usually municipalities cover the cost of these things. And I think that makes it more copacetic with...
It does.
With what, what needs to be done. The cost is minimal, you know. Of course, the idea was that I would host the show, you would do an introduction in the show. You're not going to charge anybody for your introduction. I'm not going to charge anybody for...
Not yet.
For going around.
What a ham. Not yet.
Hi there.
What a ham.
So that, that's the idea. So the cost is really, is really nominal and I think, I think the reward would be, it would be a high yield.
However, if we wanted to split the cost, is that...
It gets precarious, I think.
Well, no, I just, I just want to, is that some, if, if the town is putting something in, does that alleviate some of the...
To some of my concerns, it makes it worse. I have to spend some time researching this.
Okay.
So I think, I think the easiest way is if the town would pay.
Funded the entire, the entire project.
Now, here's, here's what we could do, is we could get sponsors, right? You can't sell advertising, right? It's government access. I had an extensive conversation with, with Alice about that. I mean, you can't have things popping up for, you know, Coca-Cola, you know, but you can have sponsors, right? And, you know, so you could go to certain organizations or something and, and have them sponsor the entire series for the whole year. At that point, you know, you know, that's not, you're not necessarily advertising. You would just give them, at the beginning, it would say sponsored by. So you could do something like that.
And it would still qualify for the government access channel?
That's from what my understanding.
See, my concern though is if you're going to, if...
See, the idea is it's not a commercial for, for an organization or a business or some kind of an asset in the town. You know, it's an informative show. It's the same thing if, if we were sitting in a studio like we used to do here and have somebody, what was it called? Grace Notes. It would be the same kind of concept as that, except it would, it would, somebody would, would be the sponsor for the show.
You know what, Matt? We might not be able to do it on the government station.
I gotta look into it.
We might not be able to do it on the government station, but if we're going YouTube, we're going Facebook, that could be added on to those. So we keep the government, the government channel's version free of any of the sponsorship and the sponsorship that they, if they sell that, that goes on their YouTube, Facebook, and then we share it out.
I mean, it's, for, for me, it's more of a legal question and our...
There are a couple of thorny issues there making me cough.
Yeah.
I just want to look into a couple of things.
Our Nyquil commercial over there is, just needs to give us some clarity on what the legal boundaries are.
I know, Alice.
I mean, listen, I'd love, listen, I wish I could just say yes, no problem, I'm in, because you know I would. But obviously, we just got to make sure that we're, we're doing everything in the proper manner and that there's no, you know, issues of gift to public funds or...
Correct. No, 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 it's got to be on the up and up. The other way that I think we could go about it, if there are issues, is we form a town committee that does this. Or we already have a town committee.
We have the cable committee, the cable TV committee, which could be this, but again, my thing is if you have the cable TV committee hosting it. But it's still the money. And so even if the cable TV committee hosts it and it's paid for with sponsorships, it's still the funding apparatus, I think, that is, that is of the greatest concern. Am I...
That, that's one of my...
It's one of the concerns.
The cable TV money.
So either...
Cable TV money come from using your town assets, you know, the communications and other things, whatever they pay the fees for us, you know, the wire, the infrastructure, so...
Well, this would be for the town. This would be directly, it would be directed, directly for the town. It wouldn't be for any, any organization or anything like that. It would really be to further all of this, this stuff that we're trying to do. We're trying to get the town on the map. We're trying to get the town out there. We're trying to make the town viable. You know, the way to do it...
All positives.
Is to showcase.
It's all positives.
And that's, and that's what this would be.
We just need to, Adam, if you, if I can ask you to come back at the next work session with clear guidelines on this?
Sure.
Is that fair? I mean, I know, I know now we're in February, but if we can get this thing done and if we can get the guidelines from Adam, then at least for February, we know what we're dealing with.
Honestly, I was hoping Alice was here tonight. I almost wanted to cancel because she wasn't, because she has a lot of information.
She's going to be a great resource, yeah. She's going to be a great resource on this.
So, and, and, you know, she, she really knows how to go about it.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's kick it to the next work session. We get an update from Adam and, and hope, you know, hopefully, obviously, that Alice is, is better. Feeling better. Feeling better because she is ill. Actually, she's in the hospital at Hudson Valley.
Is she?
Yep. So we, of course, send our thoughts and prayers to her. But I think that we kick it to two weeks, the next work session. Adam, that gives you time to do your research and it gives Alice enough time to recuperate to join in.
Did she not know we were talking about the TV show tonight? She couldn't be in the hospital? Well, I hope she feels better and, alright, so we'll put, put it on the agenda for the next work session.
For the next work session.
But like the first one on the agenda or is it...
Yes, no, well, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm just kidding. Alright.
Don't even get me started. Alright, thank you.
You feel better too?
Okay, so that's, that's completed. The hotel RFI is completed. Volunteer board appointments, Mr. Rodriguez.
We discussed this previously in close session.
We did, so we did discuss aspects of this in, in close. Again, just the way I see it, there's two items. There's, there's a, there's a specific question about a specific appointment. That is considered a lame duck appointment because the, the majority of the board did not approve, the current majority of the board did not approve it. And then there's a broader question of the role of elected officials on our committees, commissions and boards. I don't know if there's any further discussion we want to have on this matter. If not, then...
I think we could probably have Adam share what he's come back with as researcher and...
Is that a, I...
We had an appropriate spot.
I don't know if that's inappropriate, Adam?
Maybe you should, you should do your, whatever was discussed to do your homework.
That's what you were saying, yeah. I don't know if that's inappropriate or not?
No, I mean, I looked into the other appointments that the board asked that I examined and, you know, essentially, the remainder of the appointments that I looked at were unanimously passed, so I didn't think there were any issues. Well, certainly not the issues that we had discussed previously with respect to the other appointment. And that's basically the information, you know, that I, that I had.
Well, there were other, other things, and please stop me if, if we're crossing a barrier here, but there were other specifically for the ethics board. There were questions on, on the appointments on the ethics board because now they, to...
They end at the same time.
They all end at the same time, even though they're supposed to be staggered according to their, according to their governing resolution. So there are, and I've said this before, holistically, we need to take a look at our commissions and committees and boards to understand how they're operating and make sure they're operating appropriately. I think, you know, again, just, you know, that, you know, briefly, that ethics board issue is, is a prime example.
Right, and my apologies, I forgot about that. Right, so under the code, they're supposed to be staggered. And the appointments were made all to end on December 31st, 2021, or at least for the appointments. And based on my review of the code, you know, that's, that's, that's not appropriate. And I, I'm happy to look into it further, you know, if the board wants me to.
So again, we have a couple of different buckets that we're, we're dealing with on this issue. You have a specific appointment. You have, now we have this other issue, which I think falls into the bucket of a holistic review of our boards and committees and commissions. You have your, your third bucket of role of elected officials in, in these capacities on volunteer boards. I mean, from my standpoint, quite frankly, I, I really think that we should be taking a look at the code and codifying the law with regards to lame duck appointments. In that if a, you know, if the outgoing majority, it prohibits an outgoing majority from appointing people to volunteer boards and committees and commissions. And I recognize that, you know, this has been practice that's been done from other administrations, regardless of party, but it doesn't make it necessarily right. And so the law clearly states that a lame duck appointment is, what is the word that we continue to use?
Invalid?
Invalid, thank you. It's late. So, so our, so, and I think it might be beneficial just to have these clear boundaries in, in lines, so people understand that moving forward, outgoing majorities cannot continue to operate in this way.
Without a doubt, we should definitely have a law drafted, put it right into, put it right into law and, and do away with it. But it is a law. There's, there's common law background on this, that those, that those are invalid appointments. And I think that that's, you know, that's an issue that we can't really let go. Now, I, I have a problem with, with the elected official aspect from a, from a, from a point of view that where's, you know, accountability is not there. You know, we have specific accountability in our positions. And when we start getting into volunteer boards and running on them, we sort of, it blurs the line quite a bit and, and that's a concern. I look at, you know, I just look at earlier in our session when we were talking about the par three golf course. You know, is that because they're elected officials? Should the elected officials have known better? Is it, is it where we should have had someone who was more active on the, on the liaison side to say? So there's some, there's some really, really big underlying issues here that I think, think are getting, you know, getting lost a little bit. I think they really need to be addressed.
Councilman Patel?
I think, you know, also we should look that conflict of interest in any of these things comes before, you know? It has to be done really clearly because later on, you know, people complain, you know, it used to be front right up there before any appointment or anything else. And then let me just say, you know, ethics board, you know, you want to make the ethics board, previously 10 years I've been here, you know? They don't want to make the stronger law, okay? That's it. I was the only one proposing, so do it right, okay?
And, and I've agreed with you in that.
And I, and I agree with that as well. These are conversations that we've had.
Right.
And that I think we need to engage in in regards to the ethics board. I think the ethics board themselves, because I met with them that first meeting, they have changes that they'd like to see, but, you know, we're, we still have, we still can't even, you know, we're still having a problem where frankly, we're not even properly appointing people to serve on these boards.
But you know, some of the volunteer board, some of the volunteer board, or all of the volunteer board is thank you because they are coming here with their own time and, you know, and sometimes it can't even find it. So that's one side. But then the, you know, the issue with the ethics. Half the people, maybe more than half, they don't fill up the ethics little survey or sign the paper.
The disclosure form.
Yeah, they have not done it, you know, every year, you know, they have the list. So then, you know...
And there's, and there's just no recourse. There's no...
No, nobody, nobody. I, I have the longer list. There are few people fill it in. Most of them, they don't.
Yeah.
Even in planning, zoning, all those, you know? So then it has to be looked at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a totally, I agree with you 100%. I think it's a totally separate conversation.
But also, you know, you know, those, those who spending time, they come home and, you know, come here and talk and they are here to help the town.
I completely agree.
It's really hard to find some of the time that people come here and then...
I don't think we're trying to discredit any volunteer.
Specifically those who are, you know, expert in their field, you know?
Right.
I don't, I don't think anyone's trying to discredit any of our volunteers.
No, I'm just saying it in, in general, you know, I'm not saying anything else. Because if you think that you can, you know, do only the way you want to do, then people criticize and then eh, so...
I just think that, I just think that we need to make sure that, that there's a clear process and that process is being followed and...
Because, you know, look here, everywhere you hear in the world, it's really crazy, you know? Anyway, so let's have a...
Councilman?
We definitely have to have a clear delineation of what each board is and what the timeframe is that they served and if they're doing it concurrently with, if you're put in there to take a place of someone who may have had to leave for whatever reason. And it even goes further, and I said it at the, the meeting when we, when we were doing elected officials, it has nothing to do with the person. It's just the possible conflict of interest that I don't agree with. I think it needs to really be addressed and that's...
A lot of layers to this onion.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Lot of layers to this onion to peel out.
Right, that's, that's the issue here. And so I think that there's, there's, like I said, there's now, you know, there's buckets that we're trying to address.
Right.
Specific to the issue.
Yeah.
Just, just by going by Mr. Rodriguez's research, the vast majority, I think, all, nearly, nearly all of the appointments from last year were unanimous. I believe that's the case.
It's my understanding.
Right. In, in, in a case of a lame duck appointment, the remaining majority is no longer, who vote, who approved that, made that vote or, or specific appointment, if they're no longer seated at the board, then that is an invalid appointment.
If the deciding vote is not here when the...
The deciding vote.
Right.
Correct. Of the majority.
In the case of a board, yes. If it's a, if it's a, you know, if it's an appointment of an executive, then it's with that person, but in a board, it's, it goes by votes.
So let's just drill it down even simpler. If you're making an appointment, you need three votes and those three, you need three votes and those three votes need to be at the board the following year.
When the appointment starts.
Yeah, assuming it's five-member board, yeah.
In this case, you need three votes.
Yes.
And you need to have three votes or those three votes preserved the following year.
Correct.
Which is why, again, codifying the lame duck appointment would make it clear that unless they have that, that, those three votes or that majority continuing to the following year, then it wouldn't be allowed under our code.
Yeah, that, that would make it clear in town's code and codify what the common law says.
Okay. Is there recourse in such situations that we can take when that, when the, when there's a lame duck appointment?
You could pass a new appointment.
Okay. In regards to the issue of elected officials, is that, does that need to be codified? If it needs, is that a policy? How do, how do we address that in a, in a proper fashion?
You mean as a general proposition across all the boards of the town?
If that's the will of the board, yes.
I mean, I'd have to think that through a little bit.
Right.
I'd like to think about that.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless, unless a board specifically says it needs a board member on it, we have the, we have an existing mechanism of the liaison to the board. That's usually a representative of the elected government. And I think that that's, that's a, a separate distinction for a particular reason. You know, when you look at some of the charters and some of the things that are written, so, you know what, would it be appropriate for one of us to sit on the planning board? No, absolutely not. And when you, when you look at the charter for Parks and Rec, even though it's very old, it specifically says that the purpose of the commission is to be non-political. Now, when you get to the definition, which is lacking of what is political, having an elected official sort of is political. And I understand there's, you know, the conduct may or may not be great, but, but we have to look at it as an entirety throughout the history of Yorktown, not just a snapshot of right now.
Right, right. To your point, it's an onion.
Yes.
But at the same time, you know, when you, when nobody wants, is volunteering to come. Or for whatever reason, if you don't have the regulation, what you just said, they can stack up the like-minded people, you know, and it happens. No, sometimes people don't want to come for whatever the reason, you know?
Well, we, we had, we had quite a few people who weren't elected officials come in, actually three, come in to see us for the appointment that was made to our highway superintendent to be on that. So it's not a matter of this that where, where people did not want that position. People did not want to serve in their community in that volunteer aspect. We, we conducted four interviews on it. So it was still appointed to an elected official and I actually wasn't here to, to debate it and... elected official, and I actually wasn't here to, to debate it. And it's, you know, still a point of contention with me, and it's nothing against Dave or, you know, even the process. I just, I just have this, you know, that there should be a very solid line in that separation.
I did debate it on that particular night, you know, and it was.
I did not watch you, because it was 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, my time, where I was.
I'm hurt.
I'm sure you are. So, you know, I, I think, I think what we need, we should probably do right now is look at the appointments that were made. I think at this point, Adam said that only one of them stood by a majority, that Lonnie was the deciding vote, who's no longer with us. And I think the law is fairly clear on that. That, that should be recalled and either reappointed, but I would, I would like discussion on it. I think that, I think that it warrants a broader discussion on the underlying problem of elected officials on the boards. And especially, you know, for conflict, for the, for the purpose of the, the board and the charter. And, you know, and with, with a lot of respect towards Councilman Patel, you know, he brings up a great point, but when the boards are overwhelmingly being lobbied for by people in the community, that's really where we should be looking. That's my personal opinion. I think that's sort of what you argued as well.
But you know, the conflict of interest sometime will come out in many shifts and size and.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Whatever, you know.
Absolutely, Fisher.
It is difficult, really.
Very difficult.
It is.
Very difficult. Okay. So I think we can continue this conversation next week.
Yeah, all right.
Hopefully, Councilwoman Roker will return. So that just moves us finally to our last item of the agenda. I, again, wish Councilwoman, Councilwoman Roker was here. It's something that her and I had discussed at length, and just goes back to another committee, and I know we're, but it's, it seems one that's considerably lacking in this town.
Agreed.
That's the Arts and Culture Committee, something that we've talked about, you know. Oh, man, I've talked about several, this with several people, to be honest with you. And George Souls, who I think left, Barry Liebman from the Stage. I'm so excited about the, about the Yorktown Stage and the things that they would like to see accomplished.
Don't even, don't forget the stage reveal, because that was one of the.
Yep.
One of the big things about bringing that to town, giving an outlet for arts and performing arts on the move, so to speak.
Yeah.
And in our parks and.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity also partnering with the county, you know, the Westchester Arts Council and, and other organizations that could enhance the, you know, the culture of the town and encourage, you know, greater participation, civic engagement. And I think it's something that we should put forward. And like I said, I know we have a lot of committees and boards, and we're having our own issues with, with how they're governed and appointed, but I do think it's, like I said, it's something that's lacking. I think, you know, we've got so many talented musicians in this town. Jessica Lynn comes to mind, you know.
Who?
Yeah, we have a global superstar. You know, we also have, of course, you know, I think of people like Judge LaGonja and, and, you know, his band and, and so from, you know, arts, music, theater, you know, all of it. I think it's something.
Sean and Valerie.
Sean and Valerie, yeah. I mean, I think there's a lot that we can be doing, that we're not, just we're not having those conversations, because we just don't have that body that really generates those comments and thoughts. So, something for us to consider as a board and hopefully move forward.
If you'd like for further discussion, because of the proximity to them with my studio, Cal and I usually donate to the Arts Westchester.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that someone would be willing to come up if you wanna have an exploratory meeting and.
Figure out what we wanna do there, yeah. I think, like I said, I think it's something that I've heard from quite a few people from different parts of town, involved in different ways, that it's, it's just something that's lacking. And so, you know, I'm not, there's only so many hours in a day, but putting the right people in a room, hopefully they can come up with some good ideas and ways for us to implement some exciting things that only further enhance the town, bring new opportunity.
Right.
Hmm.
Thoughts?
Good.
Wonderful.
Easy. All right.
That's good.
With that, we're gonna end on resolutions. There are just a few items here.
One was already.
You wanna say a few words?
No, the one, your resolution.
Yeah, so we already passed the resolution recognizing the 75th anniversary of Auschwitz liberation. We, the next on the, on the agenda, authorize the Yorktown Police Department to purchase three Ford Police Interceptor SUVs and one Police Interceptor Hybrid. These were all budgeted from last year. Authorize the Yorktown Police Department to reimburse fall 2019 college fees and book fees for Police Officer John E. Dougherty. Officer Dougherty is getting his master's degree in Homeland Security Management, so this is more of a continuing education. As well as authorize the Yorktown Police Department to pay the spring 2020 tuition and fees for Police Officer John Dougherty for his master's degree in Homeland Security Management. Motion to accept.
So moved.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Well, again, I wanna thank everyone, and this was a bit of a lengthy town board meeting. As a reminder, the Yorktown Stage is hosting Pinocchio this weekend. Also, it's the end of the meeting, I apologize, but our Climate Smart Communities Task Force will be meeting on, on February 5th, the evening of February 5th, at 6:30 here. We're doing great work with also the Census Committee as well, so all great things. Having said that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor?